We've called the order, please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Our first agenda item is public comments, and seeing no public, we will move on to agenda item number two, which is the acceptance of minutes for the meeting on February 17, 2015.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes that's presented for February 17.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on the minutes? All in favor of the motion? Motion passes. Anybody abstaining?
Yeah.
We want abstain. Creel abstain, four zero passed. Item three is correspondence. I'll make a motion to accept the correspondence items A through W as listed on the agenda for the meeting of Tuesday, March 3, 2015. Do we have a second?
Two.
Any discussion on the acceptance of the correspondence? All in favor of the motion? Motion passes five zero. All right. Now, we have the Maynard High School Bond Anticipation Note for $1.8 million. And Kevin, can, for the viewing audience, can you give a quick update of why we're doing it and why it's a good thing to do?
Yep, so at this point, the town has not completed its MSBA final audit walkthrough submission for the closeout of the new construction of the new high school. At this point, we're looking to the ban for additional short-term need that's needed for cash flow until we do the final borrowing, which we're anticipating at a later time. At this point, the latest communication I've had is that they're anticipating June 3 to be the next MSBA board meeting, and that's the targeted date for approval of the final audit with MSBA. So at this point, we're at a point now where, again, as I stated, we need to do the ban for cash flow.
Okay. The motion is in four parts. Can I do them together, or do I have to do each one? Do we have to vote each paragraph separately?
I think we did it all as one prior.
All right, so bear with me, please. I'll make a motion to approve the sale of a $1,802,372, 1.00% general obligation bond anticipation note. The note of the town dated March 6, 2015, and payable March 4, 2016, to Eastern Bank at par in accrued interest, if any, plus a premium of $10,592.84. Further, I motion that in connection with the marketing and sale of the note, preparation and distribution of a notice of sale and preliminary official statement dated February 19, 2015, and a final official statement dated February 25, 2015, each in some form, as may be approved by the town treasurer, be and hereby are ratified, confirmed, approved, and adopted. Further, that the town treasurer and the board of selectmen be and hereby are authorized to execute and deliver a significant events disclosure undertaking in compliance with SEC Rule 15C 2-12 in such form as may be approved by bond council to the town, which undertaken shall be incorporated by reference in the note for the benefit of the holders of the note from time to time. Further, that each member of the board of selectmen, the town clerk, and the town treasurer be and hereby are authorized to take any and all such actions and execute and deliver such certificates, receipts, or other documents as may be determined by them or any of them to be necessary or convenient to carry into effect the provisions of the foregoing votes. We have a second on the motion.
Second.
Do we have any discussion on the motion? All in favor? Motion passes five zero. Just like we had anticipated. All right. So next up on the agenda is an update on the MBOD zoning. Earlier, we had asked Planning Board to take a look at the recommendations from the old 129 Parker Street Ad Hoc Committee. They had had some recommendations about possible expanded uses in the MBOD. And Bill Nemser is here to give us an update. I understand that they're not, the planning board's not done with their evaluation, but they have some thoughts at this time.
Yes, good evening. What we've accomplished so far with the MBOD assignment is we synthesized what we received originally from Ad Hoc Committee recommendations. We took some of the uses that had been proposed, and I'll run over those real quick, and added those into a matrix, which basically covers Ad Hoc Committee recommendations as well as some that the board has thought were consistent with the intent. To measure and gauge those, we created, we needed several ways to look at each use. And one we thought was going to be sort of a fact-based evaluation that was reutilizing information that we had available to us. And we kind of weighted that in one portion of the matrix. The second portion is subjective, what the opinions were of the planning board. And by adding both of them, you can pick and choose as you want, but you certainly get insight into the way each uses have been analyzed. I'll give you some examples. The Ad Hoc Committee recommended expanding the assisted living residents and senior living categories. And we really have broken, we've broken those up into three different categories now with new draft definitions. And the purpose of that is to be able to address each type of senior living on its own merits, as should a plan come forward. So for example, our new, our existing definitions are somewhat limited for assisted living residents. Currently, we simply define it as a facility licensed pursuant to general law in 19D. What we've done and what we're proposing is create a definition that defines it further. And so in this case, and I'm just picking assisted living because that was a one that jumped out, is any facility, however organized, that meets any of the following three criteria: provides room and board to residents who do not require 24-hour skilled nursing care, provides assistance with activities of daily living, and three, collects payments for the provision of these services. So in a case like that, we've expanded the definition to kind of drill down and make sure we know what type of facility is going to be proposed, and so hopefully each, the impacts can be measured of each of these types of facilities. Another use that we really, that we expanded on were hospital medical center. We made a distinction between hospital medical center, healthcare facility, medical offices, and now medical labs and urgent care clinics. So we made a distinction between each of those, again, based on what we thought would be potential impacts. For example, what was going to be 24 hours, were there going to be emergency services offered? Would something close, just be a nine-to-five business? So by expanding the uses and adding them, you know, or adding them to the MBOD use table, it gives us sort of a greater range of flexibility, but we can meet the intent of, in this case, what were the Ad Hoc Committee recommendations. A couple of others that were not, uses that were not medically related, that we're looking at, healthcare fitness center versus commercial recreation facility, two new definitions entirely that are going to be proposed. And emerging energy is another area that we're going to be recommending changes in. So what we have to date is pretty much all of these categories, like I said, fleshed out. We're going to, each member of the board is going to complete their own evaluation sheet of these uses that will become part of the final product that we deliver. So you could take, pick and choose from it, but you can get data that's based, you know, on existing sources, hard data. And then you also have the opportunity to look at what the perceived impacts may be. So in some cases, something like a, you know, a 24-hour use may be something that one person thinks is objectionable, and the next person thinks, well, you know, with that, with this type of use, it's something that's crucial to have available to the community. Senior and medical services clearly are going to play a large part of this. And we're taking advantage of the opportunity to tweak some of the definitions that I think we would agree were either lacking or needed updating. I anticipate that we're going to keep everything in sort of a holding pattern till the last minute so anything could be adjusted if needed in the future, depending on whatever, what input we get. And I think I pretty much covered it as quickly as I can, but I'm certainly happy to answer any questions should the board have any.
So is the planning board as a whole going to be making recommendations about specific uses?
Right, and, and.
I mean, is there any general consensus at the moment on, you know, which ones definitely the board likes versus which ones definitely the majority of the board don't like?
Honestly, everything to this point has been vetted so that everybody pretty much likes what's on it. There was a couple of questions about what do you mean, you know, because when we started to get into the nitty-gritty of the definitions, we had to make sure we each understood the distinctions. But so far, at this point, everything, there's a consensus on all the uses.
May I?
Go ahead.
First off, thank you to you and to the board for the effort that they've obviously been putting into this. I was intrigued by, all of them, all of those alternative uses, from my perspective, are excellent. And it gets away from the focus on retail and residential. And that was the, I think, the key piece of information that came out of, not only Ad Hoc, but also the visioning sessions that were held after the large town meeting several years ago. Can you talk a little bit about, and you mentioned emerging, emerging energy, and exactly what is meant by that and how that came to be? Because that's the one, out of all of that list, that's the one that I hadn't heard before. Not that I'm objectionable to it.
Right. That's a great question. And emergency, I mean, emergency, emerging energy technology is currently listed in our healthcare industrial district, the clock tower. But it was limited to that. And the reason, a lot of people probably weren't aware of it, it was because it was in that newer addition. And here's how, here's the definition of it and how it reads, and this is what we have currently in healthcare industrial. We're suggesting that it be added in the MBOD. Emerging energy technology: research and testing of new and emerging technologies and technological devices. Establishment engaged in services relating to the environment, development and manufacturing of renewable energy or alternative energy equipment and systems providing such energy-related uses shall be guaranteed expedited permitting. So basically, it's research and development, clean-type industry. And hopefully, I mean, the way that, you know, that we're going now, we'll see more and more of this. I think particularly where we have the opportunity, you know, to attract smaller startup businesses and that sort of thing, I would imagine that this would be something that we'll be seeing more and more of, hopefully. And so we wanted to make, certainly make provisions where we didn't exclude that from really any district where it's appropriate. That was just a use that was kind of like, oh, boy, that's here, that really should be available to the businesses. And we're actually recommending adding it to the business district, central business, and HCI district as well. And one other thing, as we go through the process, and we find a use that, let's just say, we, it's not objectional, but it has the potential that for some reason, we want to take a closer look at it before we say, yes, it can go here, then we just make it a special permit use where it's reviewed on a case-by-case basis. So you didn't end up with something that you didn't really want, or that was noxious or objectionable to surrounding areas.
Okay. The other question I had, or comment I had, more of a question, I guess. Have these discussions basically been focused just the board discussion, or has there been any public involvement at the planning board level on these discussions?
At this, at this point, it's been discussed in, at meetings, but we haven't solicited public input at this point. That's, that's, we wanted to wait until we have sort of a.
A framework.
A little more, a little more of a foundation laid down. But that's, that's our intent, is to, and take input and see what people think. The other thing, I, you just made me remember this, and is that while we wanted to limit this to the MBOD, we are taking advantage of the review and adding suggestions that we may or may not want to act on now for incorporating uses in other districts as well. Emerging energy is a part, that's what made me think of it.
Yep, great, thank you.
So emerging energy, where did that come from? Meaning, is that, was that a suggestion of someone on the planning board, or was that a suggestion that came from something that came from the developer?
Neither, that was just something, when I, when I was reviewing some of the uses in specific categories, which in this case was the healthcare industrial, I saw that, and I said, you know, that was something that we really should look.
So we were the, we created that piece of the discussion ourselves?
Yeah.
Okay.
Right. It was just where it could go, it was in one place, right. So the thought.
Related to that, Kevin, is that green communities language? Is the vi-ride zoning for that stuff?
Yeah, some of it is, yeah.
Any other comments?
Some of the expedited permitting.
Okay.
Jason?
Yeah, I got a couple. Bill, on the emerging, the emerging energy?
Popular.
I can't, I can't complain too much because I think I was there when we rolled it in on the, on the mill, on the HCI. So, but it's sort of going with what you were talking about, about clarifying some definitions. Are we drawing a distinction between, like, research and development, lab space, industrial versus, you know, office space or, or just commercial space for emerging energy technology companies?
We have a category that's existing that we wanted to modify for research laboratories specifically. I think that may be what you're referring to. And that currently is allowed in the HCI, clock tower, and the industrial districts. And just to give you, essentially, these are laboratories that are, that are used, that are rated at different safety levels. And I think when you get over level, what is it, level three? It becomes an environment where we're using hazardous materials and things like that. That was always, that was prohibited before, and it still would be prohibited under this. But the, the no risks or low-risk levels, we were recommending an expansion as a special permit use. And that's exactly what we're talking, another reason why we wanted to have special permits was for something like this, etc. Well, what, what is it really, and is it something that we could use? But it is a research laboratory. Straight out, we don't have a category for straight-out research and development that.
Would that generally be industrial, Bill?
Not, I mean, typically, what my experience has been, is that industrial categories are kind of shrinking in the uses, and they're being replaced with what they call a flex zoning. I think we talked about that one time when I, here before. And the purpose of flex zoning is to be able to look at these uses on a case-by-case basis and say, you know, one size may not fit all, but R and D is perfectly acceptable use that we don't want to exclude in an industrial, in an old-style industrial category. And a flex use would be something that I would recommend adding to our code down the line. I think we talked about that before. But, but that is the, the thought behind that, is it gives you that flexibility, and it keeps you away from the rigid confines of an industrial district.
Okay. And the other thing you mentioned was, the board is looking at, the board members are individually sort of assessing each of these potential changes?
That's correct.
And you mentioned impact, so I just want to be clear. Are they identifying potential impacts?
Right.
They're not, we're not, we're not going into a long attempt to try and quantify impacts, are we? Are we just, we're saying traffic could be an impact, but not 10,000 cars is the impact?
No, no, what we're doing, just, this is how simple it is. And again, this portion is subjective. I have a portion that's based on data, so we're not, we thought it would be helpful on both. And, and what you're asking is, in this case, it's a weighting factor. So what I was going to ask each board member to do at the end of this would be to complete our, our matrix with their own opinion of the impacts on a one-to-five scale. So for example, and I'll just, I'll just take a sample. Let's say a hotel motel, okay? The traffic may be listed, whoever would take it may as be say that's a five. So this, this is something where we see the least impact. The hotel is not going to be a huge generator. Noise, well, maybe it's going to be a three. Maybe people are going to be coming and going all night, and if there was, if there was nobody in adjacent areas, it wouldn't be any problem, but, you know, depending on where it is located. Lighting, maybe something else that, in this case, it was a sample, wrote a two. So lighting is not going to be, on a hotel motel, will probably not be an issue, in this person's opinion. And it goes on and on. Environmental, general, wetlands impact, school capacities, school general impacts, general impacts on residential butters, residential butters evening impacts, internal parking, traffic, water, and so on. So they're very, you know, you can really just, you could do that, and, you know, with, it's not real intensive to do that, but it's very interesting to see where the perceived impacts are.
Okay.
But then you say, you know, when you get into, okay, when we get into the additional information, the hard, the hard data, you know, there's certain uses that you really want to have something specific. Let's go back to the laboratories again, okay? And, and, because somebody says, well, you know, this level two, level three, what does it mean? Where'd it come from? So we have, right here, we have a note that gives, takes you to the whole, the whole criteria. Essentially, biosafety level one is a basic level of protection, is appropriate for agents that are not known to cause disease in healthy humans, okay? Where does it come from? It comes from the Center for Disease Control, something like that. And so we can, we can, you know, you have hard data, and you have something to make you think. So that was the thought behind it. But I don't think, I honestly don't think that's the labor. I don't, I don't think it's going to be labor-intensive or anything like that for, I think the most trouble, and we solved it, was just because we have a volunteer board of five people, how do I get everybody together to do this outside of a planning board meeting? And we've come up with a way that works pretty well, where we can get it done.
Yeah, thanks.
What's the, your best guess at schedule for this?
Well, if, I guess it depends on, and if, how, if we had to make changes. If we didn't make changes, if, let's just say we were ready to clean this up and run with it, I mean, it could be ready to go certainly early summer, and be vetted by all the, all committees, and everybody wanted to take a look at it legal, etc. I, really, we could do, we have a lot of the work done, is what I'm saying. On the other hand, if, let's just say there's something that we didn't anticipate that, that we thought about, and we wanted to make some tweaks to it, it would depend on the extent of those. There's something that becomes more complex, you know, it may be. It may be a little more consuming, but I don't see, I certainly wouldn't see any problem having it ready for fall meeting if we desired to do that, and I think that's the goal. I, I think my biggest fear would be if these uses, we've had a chance to look at for a while, and I don't, I can't think of many more that would come, I can't, that wouldn't be covered here, but never say no.
What about the, the simple conclusion of planning board supports this list of uses, ignoring the details of the definition and all that? When would that decision be made?
Oh, I think we'd do that, I think we'd do that fairly quickly. I think once, when, when everybody is comfortable that they've, they've had a chance to conceptualize about what uses they would like to see here that they haven't seen, and, I mean, I think we'd do that within a month or two. And probably the definitions, I mean, the way we're doing it now, I'm trying not to let anything get away from us, so if we have a definition, if we have a use comes in, try to come up with a definition, come up with what, we need to back it up. And it's not that, there's not that many, you know, more uses I can anticipate, but, I mean, it's, a good portion of the work is done, that's what I, that's.
Okay. And last question, when is this next on your, on the planning board agenda?
It's not on an agenda right now. What we're doing right now is we're workshopping it, and the way we're doing that, that's how I've kind of made do, trying to get everybody together. We have, I have this document in a Dropbox repository, so everybody can examine it. They feed in their comments to me, I incorporate them. If there's discussion needs to be done, then we will do it at the meeting. I see this being, that we've been, our board has been so busy with, with, right now with projects, it's been very difficult to spend a lot of time in this at meetings. So I really need to get the board outside of our normal planning board meetings, and that's been the challenge, really. I mean, there's, you know, it's busy enough as it is. So I think, like, I have it, it's a recurring item on all our agendas, and I kind of put it on so, you know, this is something we want to talk about at the end, but it's, to be honest, it's been hard to get to at our regular meetings.
Okay. Thank you, thank you for the update.
Well, Bill, we had another request for a book.
Ah, well, I have.
Yeah, I would like a book.
Everybody wants a book.
And guess what's downstairs? Three books. I made them the other day, they're down there, I'll, I'll send them up, and I'll leave them with them.
I told you guys you'd have them.
Yeah. Just.
I can't put mine down.
Holton, Billson. I'll bring them up, and you'll have it the other night.
Great reading, it's great reading in a snowstorm, too. Just in case.
All right. So next up is annual town meeting and special town meeting warrant articles. We got a couple drafts in the Dropbox. Control O is from the community. Control O is from the Community Preservation Committee, and looks like they did what they're supposed to do. So I'll make a motion that we accept, which one's this, is this?
Control O.
Is control, what, is that annual or special?
In the packet.
Annual. This is, this is.
There were two that were in the packet, I think.
This one's annual, the actual appropriations are special.
Yeah, make a motion to accept Control O, the Community Preservation Fund Budget Fiscal 2016, sponsored by the Community Preservation Committee, for the warrant of the annual town meeting in May. Do we have a second on the motion?
Yeah, I'll second, I'll second that, but the, is the document, document was in our, right? I remember seeing, there were three.
Yeah, it's down at the bottom.
I'm just trying to find it. There it is. S, O, got it.
Any further discussion on the acceptance of the article? All in favor? Motion passes, five zero. And then we have Control S and Control U, water retained earnings and sewer retained earnings, and these are related to what we had talked about at the last meeting, was it?
Yeah, so these are items that are being recommended, continuation of our, probably culmination of the last two meetings, anyway. It's been a little bit of somewhat playing around with, when it comes to capital items within the sewer, some other things that were determined that were originally listed as priority for FY16, have been determined that there's a little extra useful life that they don't need to happen in 16, so that is all getting adjusted for further budget years. One of the big items that you'll note is the filter for well number four, was originally listed as a FY16 priority, but after looking at it in discussions with our consultant and with Water Sewer Foreman, we've determined that we don't need to do it in 16, so we've addressed some of the other.
Does that mean we're going to get two of those next year?
No, no.
Because I thought we were doing one every year.
Yeah, it's not quite that.
Okay.
Otherwise, on S, this is everything we discussed last week, well, last meeting, with the exception of that one item. I know you weren't here, so.
I'm guessing there's some cost creep in here. Some of these numbers go up because you didn't spend it on filters?
Yeah, so, in fact, we'll talk about that when we get to U. But S, it went up slightly by 25,000. After further discussions with the foreman, he felt the backlog of water main valves and gate replacements were in dire need, and that 50,000 would be a better solution for 16's work than the 25, so. Now, what we've done is, you'll obviously note that the 310,000 is not all of the retained earnings, so what we plan to do is not appropriate the balances and let that close out in June for 15's retained earnings, and see what happens there. That could then be allocated in the fall, or again at an annual. Does that make sense?
Uh, yeah.
So these are the priority items that have been identified for Waters, well.
What happened to the fence?
For the what?
The fence, the water tank?
Yeah, that's.
Next.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's something, further vetting, it's been pulled off. There's fencing that's there now, and just looking at other areas to be able to handle the camera situation, so.
The wording of the article seems to be missing a little something. Seems like it should say at the end of the text, after fire hydro replacement, it should say, "In the amounts listed below," I guess, or some definitive reference to the bullets.
Yeah, but isn't that within the context of the, of the actual wording, where it says funds to be used for?
Yeah, I don't think.
It lists the items, and then it gives.
Well, it's the question of whether the 310,000 can be used in any amount for those things, or each one of those has a specific amount.
If the article identifies a specific amount.
The article doesn't reference a specific amount, the specific amount is just randomly, randomly listed.
You're not counting the itemization as the specific amounts.
That's correct, it doesn't say that.
I got it.
The article, as I said, just says 310,000 on these four projects, and, you know, it could be a dollar on three of them and 310,000 on one.
Yeah.
Because the article before, the community preservation, you know, has specific amounts recommended, but, you know, I think it's just missing, you know, "In the amounts listed as follows," or something, and then.
It's the same way.
The article includes the bullets.
Prior year articles, but we'll review it with legal, and this is how last year's adopted. Same when it comes to the free cash article, it's listed the exact same way.
You would be happy with something that says, "To be allocated as followed, as follows."
Yes. Because then they know, I'm going to spend up to 75 grand for a dump truck versus 309,000.
Yes.
Yeah, I'll clarify that.
And the sponsor is, is the sponsor DPW or is it us? The sponsor is DPW?
Even though we're the Water and Sewer Commissioners?
Yeah, any, it could be the DPW, any town official can put an article forward. It's always been the Department of Public Works is the sponsoring on the water sewer articles for these. I don't think it really matters.
Uh, it matters a lot, it matters a lot, because we can't modify it then, should something come up, some change needs to be made, we can't do it. If these are officially submitted by the Department of Public Works, then all we can do is accept them in their current form and see if they pass muster with legal.
The legal's already vetted these, right? People they provide, she hasn't.
Did DPW actually do this, or did you do this?
Yeah, DPW.
DPW wrote this?
I wrote it, and they approved it.
Really? Really shouldn't be done that way, but we're stuck with it now, there's nothing we can do about it.
Oh, it's, I mean.
Why, it hasn't been approved?
No, it's been approved, DP, he said DPW approved it. So it's an article that's submitted, it's in correct form, there's nothing we can do about it, we have to take it. That's how articles work. You know, it has, it has a dollar amount and it has a source of funding, so we have to take it, no matter what. We got no choice. So, all right. I make a motion that we accept Control S, the article for water retained earnings, submitted by the Department of Public Works for the special town meeting in the fall. Do I have a second?
Second, in the fall.
Oh, I'm sorry, in the spring, thank you very much.
So, to your point, though, Bill, if, if, nothing prohibits somebody from standing up on the floor and saying, "We'd like to specify and amend the article."
Oh, yeah, and, you know, the article sponsor could amend it, too, before it gets to the printing, sure.
Yeah.
All right, yeah.
The question, if we're, I assume that we're in the discussion stage.
Yep.
Why do we have to accept it? Why do we have to approve and accept it if we have a problem with it? Whether it be the form or the, or the manner of.
Because the town charter requires the Board of Selectmen to accept all articles submitted by town officials, so long as the article specifies an amount and a funding source. It's not our choice. Same as the one before, you know, the town committee submitted it, we just have to take it, we don't have any control over it. Now, we can go fire the Department of Public Works.
It has to be, it has to be in legal, legally correct form.
Yeah, well, then, you know, the only, only person who can bounce an article from this point on is legal. We can only bounce our own articles. That's why you want to be careful about who's the sponsor. I mean, I disagree that Department of Public Works should have been the sponsor on this one, because.
What's the funding source, water retained earnings?
So, the way it's written and the way it was proved and the way it was submitted, we don't have a choice. Although I suppose there's no timeline.
Suppose what?
I don't believe the, I don't believe the charter specifies a timeline for acceptance.
Make him sweat.
Good, it still has to happen, but, yeah. But, I mean, I think in general, I mean.
It's not, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be making.
I think in general, we're fine with those, but.
It's, it's, I mean, I don't think they're looking, this isn't anything underhand.
They changed in past practice, I mean, this is the way it's always functioned, Bill. Maybe not five years ago, but certainly the last several town meetings.
Mm-hmm. No, I'm just saying, you know, when it's presented like this, we don't have a choice, we have to take it as is.
Okay.
Charter doesn't allow any other option for us?
Yeah.
So they're presenting it, right?
No.
No.
Why not? It's their article.
None of the sponsor people presents.
They really ought to, they really ought to stick up for what they believe.
They'll be there to answer questions.
All right. So we got a motion and a second for the.
Who's the second?
David. For the acceptance of Control S. Any further discussion? All in favor? Control U, so what's the big difference in the numbers that we had discussed before?
In relation to the sewer system drainage improvements, requesting increased funding, be able to do the backlog of sewer system drainage improvements and assessment. A lot of that is direct results of some of the STANTEC report and the INI findings, and also the condition of the townwide sewer system as a whole, particularly this fiscal year with a very significant amount increase of backups and breaks that we've had to deal with. This was, as you remember, broken out as like $100,000 annually, again, looking to make a bigger impact in 16 with some additional funding.
What was the number we discussed last time? Do you recall?
100,000. 100,000. And that's the number we discussed with FinCom, too, right? Yeah.
Kevin, to be clear, it says drainage, this is strictly, this is strictly to address the condition and the INI requirements in our NIPD's permit? This is chasing broken pipe leaks?
I think so.
I guess we should be, this does not include the MS4 permits, correct?
Correct, that's for sure.
Okay.
That's a much bigger number in the future.
So, this gets bumped by 150 this year, and I assume it still wants 100,000 next year, and the filter happens next year. Is something else getting pushed?
Um.
Didn't you pull the filter?
Yeah, that was put.
I mean, the filter might as well get spent next year anyways.
Yeah.
Next one.
Well, the other thing is, it's different retained earnings.
Yeah.
True, but there was a plan showing how much was going to be taken out of that retained earnings each year.
Oh, there was a plan for capital needs. You know, it just, 100,000 is just kicking the bucket further down, there's much more need than 100,000.
Mm-hmm.
And with the way we've been able to fund it, we can make a bigger impact in 16, because we're also dealing with massive potential, and we're going to be dealing with increases on our liability insurance. I mean, we've played, we've paid significant deductibles this year in claims, you know, as a result, so it's just, we can make a bigger impact with those improvements as a direct result of that report that was completed.
Mm-hmm.
It's definitely a huge need there, an old system. I mean, you could, you could multiply that four times, it's still not enough money.
Kevin, where is the, I mean, the biggest, the bigger concern to me is what we find going in, so we've already gone in, we already have a three-quarter of a million dollar project from, in a report from STANTEC. Where's that, where is that coming from? And when are we, when are we going to start looking at that? When's that likely to hit the budget?
I don't know.
Is that not in the capital needs list?
It might be, it might be co-mingled within some of those numbers, I don't know how he's broken that out specific.
Okay.
I didn't catch the question, I was typing here.
Basically, the first STANTEC report that came in, the first I I report that was done.
Right.
Found some 600-plus thousand dollars worth of repairs in a small portion of the system. Where is that? Are we breaking that up and addressing those repairs, most, most serious to least?
That's correct.
Over the next few years, so that we're not getting.
They won't all be addressed in the first year, and then the second INI report will identify other ones that are higher priority, so some of the first ones identified may not get done until later years because of prioritization.
Correct.
But in no way does the, does next year's budget address 100% of them.
Right, but we are starting to address.
Yeah.
Some of them with that, to that increase from 100 to 250.
That's right.
Okay.
That's why, you know, as we, each time we've presented the capital, we've talked about how it's a constantly moving target. Every time we have a meeting with somebody, the numbers change because we get new information, better information, more thorough prioritization and so on.
Will there be actual, for the sewer system drainage improvement, would there be actual visible indication that something's going on, or is this all just research with a camera type things, or is this actually digging up the road and replacing pipes? What actually?
The INI work is the, sort of the camera work, if you will, it's how we find out what the problems are.
Yeah.
The bigger number, they say the 250,000, that's the actual.
250, that's the digging up.
Repair and replacement and so on.
Any further questions, comments? So I make a motion that we accept Control U, sewer retained earnings, put forth by the Department of Public Works for the special town meeting in the spring.
Second.
Motion and second, any further discussion? All in favor? Motion passes, five zero. So, Kevin, let's make sure the water sewer budget are our articles and not DPW. Write those up.
Yeah, I don't believe those are.
And, I'm looking at the list of other articles, what articles can we expect at next meeting?
Potentially those, the sewer water budget.
Yeah.
I'm waiting, those are done in the sense of, I mean, we know the budget, the only thing that's holding up approving those articles is the indirect cost allocations, which is done by a third party, so we're waiting on, on that number. We met with, with Toby today, made a meeting with him this morning, and we're anticipating having that, so it probably won't be in the packet if we get them done, but it'll be added to Dropbox by, hopefully by the evening of the Friday prior to the 17th meeting, because he's not, he's on a timeline of getting it to us by 1:00 PM on that Friday, so, that 's the last piece, we need to finalize those two.
Well, let's say if it's in by Friday, we'll take it up on the 17th, if it's not, we won't.
Yeah.
I mean, if it shows up Monday, or Sunday, or Tuesday, I don't want to go spending millions of dollars without looking at it.
As is the case with the general fund budget, we'll just, I mean, yeah, I mean, I don't see any reason we can't address those three on the 31st.
Uh, yeah, okay. And we got a certified, no, we got a overlay release appropriation, that was a pretty good number.
Yeah.
100 grand.
Yeah, that was good.
That's actually one of my questions, we're going to have a discussion on that in the future, a future.
Yeah, I mean, does that have to be a standalone article, or can that be mixed in with another one?
We've always done it as a standalone appropriation.
Okay.
Yeah.
We'll talk about potential ideas for use of that.
I'm going to submit my own, take it for what, what it's worth.
Well, I mean, it's tax money, I put it straight back into stabilization.
Well, that might, that's part of the discussion, I would guess, but we're going to have, we will have a discussion on the use of that.
Yes. Yes. Yes, we should. I'm not sure it's a standalone article, or it's the, something that we're gonna have to kick around for a free cash appropriation or something like that. But what about money for the Coolidge School property and figuring out how to cut that up into two parcels? I mean, we wanna do that sooner rather than later. Is that just another one of our potential free cash list items, or is that a standalone?
Yeah. It would be an itemized number within that.
Okay.
Yeah. Because you're gonna have, I mean, you're gonna have costs of the, the big costs of survey and, you know, anything related to ANR.
Do we got a number on that yet?
What's that?
How much that will be?
Is the, is the assumption that we will do an appraisal to sell the property?
Well, that's a different, that's a different matter. I'm talking about splitting the property.
Just talking about survey?
Survey the property so that we can see...
Yeah. And do the legal to break it up into two parcels.
If that, if that eventually needs to be done for, to move forward with whatever suggestion comes forward, or whatever ideas the board brings forward.
It's somewhere around three thousand?
Yeah, based on what we're getting estimates on for the rail trail easements and for what we did with an appraisal we did last year.
Three thousand?
Three to five, I would say is...
Not include all the legal and stuff?
Three thousand for the survey and the title search. And then as far as the ANR prep, should be fairly simple.
What's the survey? I missed it.
So the Coolidge School property has the building up on the hill and the playground. If something happens with the building, we wanna still keep the playground. So right now, the whole thing's one big hunk of single parcel. We gotta cut it up.
Okay.
So there's a playground-only parcel and a building-only parcel. And then we can, you know, sell or do something with the building and always retain the playground.
We can go out and put breadcrumbs down where we think the line's gonna be, but we have to have a professional surveyor do it for legal reasons.
And it just strikes me that we wanna do that in the, allocate money for that in the spring, just so if we could act on this building during the summer, we'd be able to, or the fall, so...
It'd also be required for any appraisal anyway, so...
Yeah, what?
Yeah.
So, related to the question about the appraisal, um... I thought, Kevin, you had mentioned that, you know, we probably had some money in the current budget that could be used by that committee for a technical source like that.
Yep.
But then I noticed that they paid for a facilitator at their meeting the other day, so...
Yeah, we had some...
Is that money gone now?
No, I'll have to get, I'll have to get that from the town account tomorrow, where that's at. I think, I mean, there may be some money there from, he identified another source, didn't he?
Yeah, I don't know how much the original amount was, but I'm sure it was more than we paid for Saturday.
Did you get, did you give the committee a number?
That balance.
Mike Guzzo would have.
Mike gave the committee a number?
The committee approached us about whether or not there's funds available to do something. And Mike said that there was an available source.
Yeah, I forget what the number is, though. I'll get that.
And did you say what somethings that could be done? Done with the money?
Uh, no, I said that we weren't doing anything unless it was approved. So they weren't giving a bucket of money and said, "Go ahead and do what you want." It was, "We have some money, let us know what you wanna do." And then make a determination if we're gonna fund it or not.
Okay, so they understand that now?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. But there may be some money to address that before the end of the fiscal year.
Yeah, yeah, it'd be good. I mean, we always assume they need some market analysis done. Article-wise, we have the issue of the brewery article that we sponsored to allow breweries in the downtown business district. And I was at planning board last week for the hearing on that article, and I requested a continuance of that hearing because the, um, the business requesting that issue was now deciding whether they wanted to go into the mill or they wanted to go downtown. And if they went into the mill, the article would be moot. Have they decided anything yet, Kevin?
They have not. We've called, we've reached out to them as late as, let me see, Bill sent anything?
So the meeting, the meeting on that zoning has continued till next Tuesday. So I guess I wanna ask the board for consensus direction that should the brewery decide to go in the mill, that we would pull the article from the warrant. Is that, is that okay?
That seems to be prudent, given that there would be no need to have the article go forward, given that we've already now gotten, you know, it was really set up for one particular business.
Yes, I concur with that. Jason, how about you?
Uh, I guess... I guess I'm kinda on the opposite side of that. Why not, assuming there's a desire to do so, why not allow that change to go forward anyway? Maybe you get two. Maybe you get one.
Well, actually, planning board, it was funny during the, during the meeting, I requested a continuance, and then they're like, "Fine, but we wanna talk about breweries. We think they should be allowed everywhere. But we also think they should be defined into three separate categories, nano brewery and some other breweries." So they have all sorts of ideas wandering around in their head, so I'm not sure they, I don't, actually, I don't know what they'd do with a single brewery article for a site that's not a real project. But, uh...
Yeah, I think, I think it would have the potential to just muck up the works at town meeting.
Uh, well, that's true. I mean, yeah, I mean, the only reason I, I supported putting forth the articles goes that we had a viable business that, that needed that, and they needed that action. And if they don't need it anymore, I can think about it later.
Jason's point, if it's, if the language is there, does that then attract a viable business? If it's, if it's not a, I mean, we've already, we've already put it in to, you know, why wouldn't you leave it in? And then, you know, does that attract a different, a different brewery? You know, this guy changed his mind, or, you know, he goes to the mill and it doesn't work out. It just seems like, why, why pull it? It's, I don't think that it's stressful or topic.
Okay. Tim, you're the signing vote here. If they go in the mill, do we pull it?
So the original language was, it was for downtown district.
Central business district has a...
The mill doesn't qualify, is that...
No, that already has, the mill already has that zoning.
HCI, it's already allowed use.
The mill already has that exact zoning, and we were just expanding it to the central business district.
So there's, you wouldn't see any hurt in leaving it if nothing just became Walgreens? If the brewery went to the mill and it was just there, wouldn't hurt anything, right?
Um, I don't know. I'm sure planning board has ideas. Well, I know planning board has a lot of thoughts on the issue, so they might, they might run out of control, but...
Hmm?
At this point, the hearing needs to move forward anyway, because there won't be, there won't be another meeting for the board to pull the article.
Um, well, it can be, a motion of the board can be dependent on the thing. But it doesn't sound like the majority of the board wants to pull the article regardless. So...
Yeah, I mean, I, well, I mean, if, if planning board has other ideas and wants to do something different from the article that came forward...
That would be a different article.
That would be a different article.
Right.
Right, so, well, I guess in either case, then it would get pulled.
Right, well, that's my point. I don't want, I don't want an orphan article out there for no apparent purpose. I mean, if planning board wants to go put brewery articles up for every district, that's fine, too.
They may take that up when they deal with the expanded use tables beyond the N B O D.
Yeah, and, you know, frankly, I just, you know, I don't know about enough breweries to understand they're one in three different definitions. Nano breweries can go in this district, and big breweries can go in that district, and all sorts of, sorts of fun thoughts they had. But I'm a little concerned about an orphan article just floating around and, yeah, maybe as David says, mucking up town meeting.
Well, how much time do you have to decide? Because if the, if it doesn't work out, if it doesn't work out with their negotiations or discussions with the new people in the mill, and we've told them we're gonna seek this change with them, you know, where does that put us if we pull it out, we have to wait again?
We could pull the article anytime.
Up to town meeting.
Up to the floor of town meeting. I'd just rather articles that aren't gonna be acted on not be printed in the warrant. So that puts us March thirty-first, April seventh, something like that.
Yeah, April seventh.
Then let's revisit next meeting after the hearing.
Okay, alright, well, that'll be an interesting planning board meeting.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think, I think the proponent would just assume, pull it and not have the hearing if they can get the definitive answer on the mill. And we were expecting to have that today, so they're obviously still working something out. But certainly by next Tuesday, I would think they could lock in and give us the hundred percent go-ahead that we're going there or we're not. But certainly, they don't wanna move, I mean, I can't imagine if they, if the proponent of the article even showing up to the hearing if they definitively aren't going there.
They're not the proponent, we are.
Well...
It's our article, it's our hearing.
Okay, not the proponent.
They're the catalyst.
Sure. The driver behind it.
Alright, so, so I'm back stuck where I am. So I'm gonna show up on Tuesday. The guy's already decided to go to the mill, but the board has not authorized me to pull the article and request that the hearing stop.
Alright.
That's what I'm looking for, is the ability to do that.
I would prefer we give you the authorization.
I don't, I guess I don't get it.
Repeat the question?
Question is...
Well, so you wanna, you wanna, we're not necessarily gonna pull the, we're not necessarily gonna pull the article, but you want the ability to tell the planning board to delay?
No, I wanna, I wanna pull the, I want the authority to tell the planning board, we're gonna pull the article and ask that they end the hearing if we receive information before that time that the brewery wants to go to the mill. If they don't say anything, we don't hear from them, the hearing keeps going. But if they do on Tuesday morning, say, "Hey, we're all set, we signed all the papers, we're good, we're happy, everything's wonderful," just seems a little catch-22 to be stuck in that hearing.
Yeah, I would agree with that. Particularly if they have no...
This is on March tenth.
Desire to attend.
Correct.
Well, not only do they not have a desire to attend, I think, as I mentioned earlier, when it comes time, you know, people start talking, people, the word gets out among the town, and then there's mixed messages, "Oh, the brewery's actually going to the mill." "Oh, no, it's not, because there's an article at town meeting to put it on downtown." And when you get to town meeting, the story becomes, it's a mixed message, and it becomes a mucked-up situation where people are talking about a brewery that doesn't exist. "No, that brewery's going over there." People are confused, and we lose, we lose people's...
Regardless of what happens on March tenth, though, we could prevent it from being printed in the warrant after that date.
Certainly, if, we don't know, yeah, if the hearing goes through.
Limit that concern that you have, which is very legitimate. But the chairman's question is, can we just avoid the whole controversy on March tenth?
Avoid the hearing.
If we don't need to have it.
We, and...
Yeah, I guess the question really is whether we can stop the hearing rather than the article, because we have time to stop the article.
Right.
But it's not the hearing.
Good point.
But...
That was my confusion too, Becky.
I'm not seeing a third head nod up and down, so... Looks like the, uh, hearing's going.
Do you want a motion?
That's what I was waiting for.
I don't need a motion, but, but, uh...
Or are you just looking for...
I was like, just looking for, um...
I have no issue, if they come back to us, I have no issue with you pulling, basically waiving the hearing from planning board. So does that make three of us?
They being the brewery.
They being, if the brewery, if the brewery comes back and says, "We're going to," definitively says, "We're going to the mill," because they work out something with a new developer, I have no issue with waiving the hearing. Kevin said the same thing. It, it, that's the simpler thing to do, would be to not waste planning board's time having a hearing on something that really doesn't make a difference, especially if you're telling me that they're going in like fourteen other directions.
Right, yeah, and they have their own ideas, so, you know, that's a good point. Alright, so I'm going with that unless somebody's insisting on a motion, but I'm not really sure what the motion would be, so...
Motion would authorize the chair to advise the planning board that the board intends to withdraw the motion, withdraw the warrant article, given the intense intention of the business.
Alright, fine, I'll take that as a motion, and I'll second it. Any further discussion? All in favor? We have four opposed? One opposed, De Silva? Alright, we move on. Wow, I didn't think that would be that hard. Anything else to talk about under warrant articles? Okay. Fiscal sixteen budget update. Did you steal the governor's budget before it got released tomorrow?
Tomorrow, we will have it. So I don't have a whole lot to update. We're anticipating the governor's budget to be released tomorrow, as was discussed, was literally utilizing every hour and day that he had to release it. So that, that's still a factor. I also sent out to the board the final budget number that we received on the adopted budget for the Assabut Valley Technical High School, and, which was a reduction in what was anticipated from the preliminary budget, just slightly, a little over eighty, I don't have the exact figure with me, a little over eighty thousand to the better as far as the assessment. So that budget has been reduced, and if you recall in my email, my recommendation was that we just let that money, that revenue stay there in anticipation of potential other increased costs that we weren't, we don't know what that'll look like yet.
What's your definition of yet? You mean by March thirty-first?
No, by meaning as of when I sent out that email, so...
I know, but you're saying, so why don't you suggest then that we commit that?
Oh, yeah, definitely, yeah, definitely by March thirty-first.
Okay.
But it's already committed, that's the second part of that. This afternoon, we received notice, verbal notice, not good news, with regards to health insurance increase, which at this point, they announced our rate for FY sixteen as a substantial increase, set about nine point nine eight percent, which is almost three percent more than what was budgeted. Actually, it is three percent more than what was budgeted for. That's the average statewide as high, partly due to plan change that required, required by the Affordable Care Act. Like, one of, one of the pieces behind that is covering children until the age of twenty-six, dependent children to the age of twenty-six, and some of those other Affordable Care Act increases. So across the, across the trust, there was an average of a nine percent increase. We're looking at nine point nine eight percent, and that has a direct result of the high over the preceding two-year average of our claims ratio. Last year had a pretty significant spike within our HMOs. So when they run those loss runs in claims ratios, that's part of what factors into the individualized communities rate, that's part of the trust. As I've said in the past, some years, Maynard helps the trust, and other years, other communities help.
Have we had many claims presented from Maynard in recent times that have been significant?
Uh, yeah, yeah.
We have.
Yeah.
Because, you know, in the past, probably six years ago now...
It was really high.
Maybe a little less than that. We, we were given a number by the health insurance people through Maya or whoever it is, and we appealed it and successfully got it reduced. And it was reduced fairly significantly at the time, just by pointing out what our history was and et cetera, et cetera. I would strongly suggest we try that again. Unless there's, there's clear reason for Maynard's number to be going up by ten percent. There's gotta be, you know, it's gotta be better than just, well, this is the average across the state, so that's what it's gonna be. I mean, what basis are they tossing us on the bus?
Yeah.
I don't think we can take it without.
Average across the trust, that makes up the Maya trust, so the communities among the Maya trust. They also set their range significantly higher, so their floor is significantly higher than it has been in prior years. You know, we're, I think last year we were at zero to ten? As, yeah, as a floor.
And we came in at like two and a half or something?
Right, and this year, the floor was even higher.
It was two to twelve.
Yeah.
Because private sector health insurance numbers are no, not going up by that much, like, anywhere near that much.
The significant mover for us, and we're gonna get a more complete analysis from our rep, but, and we already knew this before we got our number, was that our utilization, it's done on a two-year history, was higher. And it's, there was a spike in calendar for, I don't know what the date range is, it's like, it sounds like September to August, Kevin?
Yeah.
But in that, in the prior September to August period, there was a spike. Perhaps we had someone with cancer or something like that, so it skews our numbers for the two-year running average. The previous two years, where last year's rate was set, we didn't have that kind of a spike.
Yeah.
The other major factor is the changes required by the Affordable Care Act.
Yeah, we, we have gone over some of those sort of high-cost claims and, you know, dealing with likelihood of recovery and ongoing treatment and all those things, it's all factored in and it's all in actuarial analysis. To David's point, I don't, I don't anticipate accepting that as gospel. I mean, we just got the phone call at three o'clock this afternoon with what our number is, but I don't know. You know, I, I remember, I mean, I was involved when we, when we did that, but I don't, I don't know how much, just, I mean, that's, that's where it's at. I don't know how much leverage we're gonna have, but we certainly will push back.
You got the point, dude.
Yeah, yeah.
Just because that's the quote we get, doesn't mean that that's necessarily stuck with us.
And again, I appreciated the rep actually calling and giving us that, because in the past, they've held on to that until they've physically come out and had a sit-down meeting, and it's usually somewhere the second week of March. So we're getting it a little bit earlier than we have, albeit verbal, it's a set number.
He didn't want the statement being thrown across the room at him if that.
Yeah, right, I know.
So what's the number?
You know, they're down eighty on Assabett.
Yeah, the total's about, it's about a hundred and forty-five thousand as a whole that.
Above budget.
Yeah, and if you factor in the Assabett and some other areas, you know, it's above fifty thousand alls that we gotta.
That was half the overlay.
That we'll have to make up for.
Overlays one time.
I'm joking.
Well, that's alright, two-thirds out of the school budget, one-third out of municipal budget.
And then that factoring in with the, which we'll discuss at our next, our next meeting, the request for, from the school committee and some other areas.
Yeah, actually, in, on that.
But again.
On the issue of the school committee request that came in, letters came in late, I don't know.
Yeah, they came in after.
Something like that, didn't make the packet. I asked FinCom if they could vet the request for the grant match, and so they're gonna be meeting with the school committee on the ninth.
On the ninth, okay.
So they'll find out, you know, whether there's any continuing financial commitments or something.
Yeah, that's the conversation we've had internally, you know, with, you know, what does this mean, is it after, you know, year three?
Right, exactly, so, let me just double-check that it's really not, yeah, yeah, like, I'm coming in on the ninth to talk that over. I'm not sure they're talking over the big budget request, just the grant match thing.
Just the grant piece, yeah, which was a free, yeah, free cash piece, but, you know, the, the actual budget request piece, it, you know, was, I don't know, we'll have to talk about that at the, at our next meeting, but.
Yeah, we will.
So.
Question on the, the governor's budget. What the heck do we do with those numbers, because usually you just, they're just a waste of time. And, you know, the House and Senate numbers are totally different, and, you know, the governor's budget, you just can't rely on it.
Right.
So, you know, say it says, ooh, you're gonna extra hundred thousand dollars, do we throw that into our budget crunching? Or do we just ignore it and cross our fingers that it's right?
Probably will, if that is the case, we'll probably look at that closer and just leaving it level. Is what we've kind of done in the past, because it's uncertain and it certainly will change beyond the governor's budget.
So, can I infer that you're saying that if the numbers go down in the governor's budget, we might adjust for that? But if they go up, we cautiously don't yet?
Yes.
Okay. And remind me when the House numbers might come up?
I think it's some, end of April. I have to go back and look at, I don't recall off the top of my head, I might have, I don't have it in that packet.
Before town meeting?
Before town meeting, but after the warrant's printed, but okay, fine, that's alright.
Definitely after the warrant is approved and printed.
That would be my recollection of previous years.
Well, usually we have the House number before the warrant, we just don't have the Senate. But usually, local aid doesn't change that much. But, yeah, get a new governor, everything runs late.
Right, pushes it off, I mean, we've run close to them as far as approving the budget article.
The initial, the initial. The initial commentary about the governor's budget relative to, to local aid was positive. The problem, as Phil and I had this discussion before the meeting, you know, three point six percent, I think, is what they, he says he will, he anticipates increasing local aid by three point six percent, and when you look at the budget, three percent of that goes to Boston. The point six percent has to be shared by the rest of the state, so.
Yeah, we'll find out.
We'll find, yeah.
That's the way that goes.
Yeah.
Okay, so we're not gonna cash, spend the money before we can see the check.
Yeah, any, any other questions that the board has on the budget? Any questions on the water sewer enterprise budget? Because again, we're looking to prepare the three articles related for those accordingly, okay?
Alright. So move on to agenda item eight. The board's comments on the one twenty-nine Acton Street rezoning. They wanna rezone to general residential, and I think the planning board hearing is the seventeenth on that, is that correct?
Uh, that's correct.
So, the question is, what, if anything, the board wants to present during that hearing for, for comments and thoughts? And I solicited some informa, requests for some initial ideas from members, and I have a few common things that came out. One is that, you know, the thought that there should be a development agreement that, that codified things like the number of units and the number of beds, the size of units. I, I put that in the basket of, you know, it guarantees the promises made at the zoning discussion. The second issue that comes up is the, the compliance of the project with the community development principles, which are, are quite broad at times, but references things like desiring a mix of housing, commercial retail, need to accommodate all incomes, transportation choices, and smart infrastructure, financial assessments. And related to the needs of all incomes is the, is the topic of whether any affordable housing would be required as part of that project, or should be required as part of that project, or perhaps somehow funded somewhere else. But, you know, it still happens when that project happens. And then, one other comment that I thought of was that, given the Mass DOT response to our rail trail comments, then our hope of getting that intersection safer for the bike crossings is not likely to happen in that way, so I could understand the, whether that might be an issue. Overall, though, I think, oh, and the other issue I bring up is the complete streets issue. Since we're a complete streets community and we have that as a policy of the town, we're probably the first in the state to do that. You know, the complete streets analysis for this and any project would be important. And frankly, I think the complete street solution for this project is the rail trail. Because, you know, otherwise, what are you gonna do, build a sidewalk all the way down Acton Street? I mean, it seems like the rail trail works for that. So, those are the general topics, anybody else have any other topics they wanna chat about?
Well, I think importantly, relative to a development agreement, that would have to be agreed upon prior to any zoning article before town meeting, which limits the time that we have to come to an agreement on a development agreement. If you follow what I'm saying.
True, true, yeah, and I think I concur with your point of, you know, these kind of articles really shouldn't go to town meeting until, you know, the promises are guaranteed by a development agreement.
That's the point.
Yeah, and maybe it's on the warrant, but, you know, the development agreements, development agreement's not in place, so the article gets pulled.
And we are sponsoring that article?
Uh, we don't know, actually. Right now, there technically is no sponsor, I mean, I think flexibility-wise, it'd be easier for us to do it.
It would give us, especially if we're insist, if we're going to require a development agreement, the development agreement falls into our purview, and therefore, we should have the ability, at least this is my thought, we should have the ability to, to say, you know what, we're not happy with the development agreement, this article should not go forward. Because otherwise, once again, you get in front of town meeting and you've got a mishmash where if you don't have the promises given and we're not ready, we shouldn't be going forward to town meeting with an article that, well, it's gonna be in the development agreement, well, where is the development agreement, well, we don't have it yet, we shouldn't even have that discussion, it should be off the, off the table.
Yeah, I think it's in the best interest of the town and the developer, but, Jason, what are your thoughts on development agreement?
Yeah, I apologize, Bill, I didn't have a chance to get you comments ahead of time, but I agree with the development agreement. I think that's a very simple way of making sure that all the, all expectations are set and can be met, including, you know, potentially conveyance of the rail trail land, granting of the easements. I guess I didn't see the, I didn't see the Mass DOT comment about the intersection there.
Not in, not in scope.
I must've gotten stuck.
It's in the packet here.
I must've gotten stuck at the, at the comments about the parking area.
Yeah. They basically gave us the finger in all our comments, but, alright.
I think they respectfully disagreed, Bill.
Oh, okay, alright.
I, I guess as far as the affordable housing, you know, that.
Let's stick with development agreement for a second, let's just run that across the board first.
I'm, I'm good with the development agreement.
Chris?
I agree.
Tim?
Good.
Alright, sorry. You knew where to go, alright, affordable housing.
I'm okay with it, you know, to be covered in the development agreement, I do see it as a sticking point.
We're talking two units, right, that's a ten percent, right?
Who's the total number?
Eighteen.
Eighteen, okay.
Yeah, they proposed eighteen units, and my, my thought, you weren't at our last meeting, but my thought is, you know, we have these development principles put up here on our wall, on our wall, and it was, it was basically voted on by town meeting. These are the things we're gonna concentrate on, and we see these, you know, the recent, the recent approved project over at, what's it, the one across from?
Keen.
Well, no.
Keen, Keen Avenue.
That doesn't have any affordable units attached to it, so we've lost, and, you know, the gentleman sat here that, the night saying, well, you've already met your, your forty B requirement, this isn't about forty B, this is about what's the right thing to do, not only because, from my perspective, but also because our community has said this is the right thing to do, to assure that we are finding opportunities for, for affordable housing. So I think it should be a requirement based, and there was a comment made at the Saturday meeting that you were at, that I really appreciated the woman making, where, you know, Maynard has a propensity to put all our affordable units in one spot, and social economics suggests that people should be mixed, and people with different incomes or whatever should be part of this community and not separated by, by a neighborhood, she particularly pointed out, I think.
Yeah, she pointed out one area.
One area.
You're talking, you're talking the Coolidge meeting, right?
The Coolidge meeting, yeah, but there are a number of areas in town that are like that, where we separate out our affordable units and put them in, in particular spots, and when we have an opportunity to start working towards a different approach, we should do so. It's just the right thing to do. So my point is, we should be insisting upon when developments are coming forward, that there are, that affordable aspects are always being considered because it's the right thing to do.
The problem that occurs is that you've got someone building houses on Waltham Street with no affordable component, and you've got Keen Avenue with no affordable component, and now you have one twenty-nine Acton Street, and you're gonna try and force him to put an affordable component in his, in his project? I don't, I don't.
Well, no, in my opinion, all, all three of those projects.
I understand what your opinion is, and I, and I don't argue with your opinion, but what I'm saying is, we've got, if this, if this is to take place and say all three guys are building at the same time theoretically, you can't tell two guys, have at it, do what you wanna do, and then tell the third guy, but you have to put in two affordable units, whatever the number may be. So I think that if, if, you know, we point to the wall, and this is the community development principles, well, you might wanna bring the planning board or whoever else is making decisions in, and give them the community development principles, because if they're not following them.
Absolutely agree.
We cannot say to the next guy, don't worry about those guys, we're gonna do it, because that's. Spend a lot of time in litigation and everything else, just to have the guy be able to do what he wants to do, in my opinion. I mean, if it's gonna be a concerted effort town-wide to, you know, you know, enforce the Maynard community development principles, everybody's gonna be on board, and everybody's not on board, and I'm not disagreeing with you at all that there should be a affordable component or anything else, but if we don't do it for one, you can't do it for the rest, or vice versa.
So you're suggesting then, from here on out, because two projects have been approved in recent weeks, that we can't?
I'm not suggesting that at all, what I'm suggesting is that it's a, it's gonna, like, to Jason's point, it's gonna be a difficult sell to tell the builders at one twenty-nine Acton that they have to do it where we haven't insisted that others do it, that's all I'm saying, and if that's the case, we've gotta correct that behavior town-wide, meaning planning board be on board with it and enforce it, because otherwise, you know, you can't, we can't tell one guy to do one thing and another guy to do another, we have to be consistent. And that is ridiculously inconsistent of the, of the town of Maynard to, to not insist that the previous two projects approved had no affordable component, but that the next guy should have an affordable component, and oh, by the way, we'd love to take that little tractor land out behind for the rail trail.
Well, well, well.
There's two separates, two separate issues.
I hope a developer wouldn't come to Maynard and say, you know what, we want, we need you to help us get a zoning change, and oh, by the way, pay us, you know, thousands of dollars to take, to, as, as well as give us the zoning change. So they walk away with millions of dollars for their project, as well as money on the backs of Maynard, because we need money for the rail trail.
Well, we're too late in the game, I think, right now, to try to push affordable housing on the property to get an easement that we really need to get the project going.
I'm not, I'm not saying the two are tied together, I'm not trying to tie the two together like that in any way, or suggest that the town is, you know, you're gonna hold something over for somebody, I'm not suggesting that in the least. I'm just saying, it's, it's, you've got one guy who's gonna, you know, that, somebody's asking for something basically at a reduced price if not for nothing, and, but that's also the guy who you're saying, and on top of that, you know, sell a couple of those units at a reduced price, because that's our community, community development principles, and you know that he knows exactly what's going on in Keen Avenue, knows what's going on on Waltham Street. on on Waltham Street.
No, I, I agree with the, trying to be consistent, and I agree that the planning board should be going through the community development principles, but.
What?
In my mind, this is two different things. This is a request for a zoning change, and it's a special request to the town, and the guy's gonna make, he's gonna clear like 2 million bucks because of this zoning change. Keenav was not a zoning change, Waltham was not a zoning change. This is a special, special thing he's asking the town to give him, and, you know, I don't think that, you know, if the town was to give it to him, you know, having it be in compliance with the community development principles is a bad idea. I think this is a very special request. It's a very profitable request for the developer.
So, so, community development principles only apply if you're asking for zoning change?
Well.
They have to apply equally across, across the board, whether you seek a zoning change or not, you have to stick to the principles. That's why they're called principles.
I, I concur with that.
I think, I, I don't know.
You know, I don't know exactly where to draw the line, but I know that this project is different than the other projects. But Tim, what's your thoughts on the affordable housing piece?
I would say, that easement, we need that, that is a crucial piece for the rail trail, and the town is already.
That's a different discussion.
Say, if that's part of the agreement, we do one thing, they give us another, is that not the same thing? We get a piece of property for letting him build. Was that not part of the agreement?
Well, it might be, but I'd, I'd see that coming up for different reasons. I mean, I see that as part of the complete streets policy.
Saying if that was part of the agreement, it's a little too late to push the affordable housing, make him change everything that he needs.
Well, I don't understand the timeline. There is no agreement, there is no project, there is no discussion.
I, I was under the impression that it was, it was.
No, there's nothing. All there is, is a pending hearing at planning board for a request to rezone some property. There's no deals made, there's no discussions made, there's nothing, nothing's existed.
Not just the whole scope of the rail trail project and learning about it, it was, let's get this part done, let's get DOT compliance, let's knock down parking spaces, let's get all this done, let's get the project built.
Oh.
That was my.
For the rail trail, yes.
Rail trail. So easements are part of the rail trail.
Yeah, but I see, you know, the developer, that probably would be foolish not to do the rail trail because, I mean, how else is he gonna put in the pedestrian connections he needs for his project? It's cheaper to give the rail trail and let us build it than for him to buy right away and build sidewalks. Save him money.
I'd say it was gonna save us money if we struck, struck an agreement somewhere in there and we didn't have to buy the easement straight up from him. That's where I was going with it, is that we don't have to pay for that easement if it was part of the agreement.
I don't see why anybody would buy the easement. I mean, if the guy wants to build 18 houses, you know, he needs sidewalks, and he's swayed to do sidewalks to put it on the rail trail.
And, and he wouldn't get the votes at town meeting when it was learned that, oh, by the way, ladies and gentlemen, we asked him for an easement to, to allow us to build our rail trail, and he denied that, and so instead, ladies and gentlemen, give him the change to the zoning, and be, out of the kindness of his, of our hearts, we'll pay him $20,000 for his, for his strip of land. He loses at town meeting, he gets to build nothing. He needs a two-thirds vote.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't, I wouldn't necessarily say he loses, I wouldn't, I wouldn't necessarily agree with that because you're gonna have a certain, you, you know, you're gonna dangle the affordable housing carrot out there, there's gonna be a certain segment of people that don't want to see any affordable housing at all whatsoever.
That's true.
You know, so you're gonna, you're gonna fight that battle. I, I, you know, I'm not arguing with it, I just think that, you know, I understand that they're asking for something, but certainly, the town made concessions both on Waltham, Waltham Street and Keen Avenue concessions were made and concessions were given, and, and it just seems to me that, to, to now, you know, not, not, to expect this, this builder to, you know, meet a need or meet a requirement that wasn't there for the prior, prior builders and towns, just doesn't seem, it doesn't seem like it's something that you want to.
So where does it start? I don't understand, what happens with the project after that? You know, what if I want to put in, you know, 500 units somewhere? I don't do any affordable?
I, I don't know when you start, but.
How about this, Chris, let, let me just point out one thing on that, and I appreciate what you're saying, but I can tell you right now, this builder just finished his 11th unit in another development in town with no affordable housing component. So, you're gonna start with somebody.
Prior to that, he had six. The last six the town got.
Well, one thing I'm wondering about, you know, one thing I don't mind is, you know, I don't necessarily need to see affordable housing on this site, maybe I do, maybe I don't, but, you know, it could be some enabling thing at some other site. But Kevin, a question to you, if, if this was done as a development agreement and not as a 40B project, the paperwork and hoops you have to jump over is much less. I mean, you can build it any way you want, it's just how you rent it at the end or sell it at the end, right?
Right, yeah, I mean, restricted.
Well, there's none of the accounting of, oh, how much did you spend on this building versus that building, and all that nonsense you go through with the 40B process.
Right.
Right, it's just, in the end, you have to sign something saying, you know, these two units have a price cap on them or whatever it is.
Yeah, I think it's recorded on the deed.
Yeah, so it's a far simpler process than, within a 40B.
If it, yeah, 40B, I don't know if it's even a discussion, though we want to go down, they need dictating, you know, requirement to have 10, you know, three bedrooms, 10% three bedrooms.
Well, they're all three bedrooms anyway.
It's all this other stuff.
But I didn't see it as a, as a big, big hurdle for somebody if you do it this way. But, I don't know, I think.
When do we have, when do we have to decide about that plan?
Now.
Now?
Clearly, it's question number three.
What's the planning board gonna say?
The planning board is, is opening and probably closing a hearing on a zoning request.
And then, so, I guess the, the next question, if, if we're talking about the, the agreement, what's the, what is the, what does the planning board say about that agreement? What if they disagree with the, with us? That there has to be a, an affordable component, I mean, how, you know, where do we go from there?
Kind of depends who sponsors the article, but yeah, I mean, they could do that.
If I recall, didn't the planning board and Board of Selectmen sign the last development agreement that came before the town?
Uh, yeah.
I would hope so, I mean, it's, I mean. It's a little odd because a development agreement applied to a site plan, there is no site plan yet, there is no project put forth, but all there is right now is a request for rezoning.
These are just our comments, these are.
These are comments for the rezoning hearing, and, you know, what I'm, what I've got so far is, is, you know, the project should have a development agreement, and frankly, it should be in place before town meeting. And I'm hearing a majority of the board saying, you know, a couple affordable units would be a good idea.
Absolutely.
And I think the other topic, I don't know, are there, I mean, other topic of, of access to the site, which to me overlaps the, the rail trail alignment. I mean, I think that's, my expectation would be, any developer would want to do that just because it would save them money, because our complete streets policy requires, you know, not just vehicular access to the site, but pedestrian bicycle access, and that, that piece of road doesn't have any pedestrian bicycle access unless there's a rail trail. But of course, he's, you know, he could buy a sidewalk all the way from Acton Street to Congress Street if he wants, but I kinda doubt he'd want to.
And of course, the, the development agreement should quantify the fact that the project is no law, no, will not be any larger than what they propose at their, are we, do you want us to talk about what we want in the development agreement, or do you want us to talk about what we want to present to the planning board? Because those could, two, those could be two different items, but I think we have to.
I think it is two different items.
I think we have to limit the size of their project so that they don't propose to the planning board, you know, what they brought to us was 18 units, and then after they get the zoning change, suddenly it's, it's 90 units. So we want to put a maximum number of units, namely 18.
You're looking for a development agreement that essentially captures the conceptual proposal that they're coming in with. Number of units, number of bedrooms, number of affordable units.
And I'm not saying, you know, I'm not saying that, you know, it should be fewer units or more bedrooms or whatever, it's just, whatever's presented.
Is what it is.
Should be captured. I think that's a good way to put it, because it's kinda hard to vote at town meeting on promises.
And I'd also like to protect the school system by having some type of protection, however, if, if at all it can be built in, that says that if the number of, you know, they put money aside in some type of, of, of a trust fund of some type, that within 10 years, if the number of, of schoolchildren come from that development exceed X number of students based on the statistical analysis as to how many students should come from it, they owe the town the money, the difference. Because they, they're going to bring, you know, they're gonna tell us, oh, we're putting in three, two bedrooms with a loft, and the next thing you know, you got three bedrooms, and, and our schools are getting overrun.
If it comes in under, does he get money back?
I don't want to be involved in anybody else's birth control.
I'm not trying to be facetious, I'm just.
No, because he hasn't spent any.
That's what he's gonna come back and say.
Yeah, I don't know if it's practical, I mean, how do you do it?
I'm just trying to protect the town from.
But he, he can't, he can't control that. You can't, you can't control that. If, if, if someone put the same thing in, in effect in my neighborhood and I moved out and someone with four kids moved in, am I gonna charge the, the family of the developer more? I don't, I think, I don't think we can ask that. I, I, I mean, we set the tax rate per, 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 you know, per whatever the, the thousands are, I don't think you can then say.
So if he doesn't want to deal with that, then he, then he negotiates with us to give aside 10% on affordable housing.
Good luck. He'll see you in court, that's what he's gonna tell you.
What grounds does he have to sue? I mean, this is a, this is a.
Well, Kim, I, this is just comments for a zoning hearing.
I just, yeah, I, I'm okay with the, the development agreement, but I guess we'll have a discussion about what's in it at another time. Is that, is that the point?
I, I believe, yes, I believe that's correct.
Because I think that, as a group, the inconsistencies in what we ask for is gonna be a, a problem for us.
Oh, yeah, we're nothing if not inconsistent in this town.
Well, it's, it's, inconsistency's a problem when you.
And actually, you know, from watching the planning board hearing last week, there was an excellent example of that.
Those are a follow-the-street extension being built as we speak, five other units.
Where's that?
Follow-the-street extension.
Yeah, up near the cemetery. None of which are affordable.
There will be a number of zoning changes that come out of what happened over there, because we didn't have certain protections, and now we will.
Yeah, we got a lot of bedrooms coming online, way more than we think, and we got a lot of people queued up for more.
And, and we have to make sure that we protect the town, rather than just thinking that because we're getting housing and development, oh, this is wonderful for us, well, not necessarily the case.
Yeah, well, I mean, we'll see if playing board can do a thoughtful process, but, all right, so I'm gonna, I got a couple topics to bring up at the, at the hearing as far as the board's concerned, and of course, any individual members, member, is welcome to attend and give their own opinions.
Just to be clear, Bill, that, that meeting's on the 17th?
I believe it is on the 17th.
That's, then.
That's our next meeting. Is it really the 17th?
I know they had the 10th, but I think, hang on, I'll confirm.
They have some sort of meeting on the 10th.
That's the one, that's, that's the brewery.
I think, I think, I think 129, I think 129 Acton's on the same agenda.
Not real Irish.
I think they're both on the same agenda.
I'll confirm.
I was gonna say, Bill was here, but he's not here anymore.
All right. We'll wait till Kevin does his confirming, and then we can move on to, you texting him?
Topic number nine.
Well, you said that was, did that come up at the last meeting, or?
What?
129 Acton Street?
Yeah, there's a present.
Was that continued, or was it?
Oh, you're talking planning.
Yeah.
No.
Oh, okay, I was just gonna look at their agendas or their minutes and see if I could.
No, 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 that hasn't, that hasn't hit him yet.
That hasn't, yeah, it hasn't gone before.
Okay, well, nevermind.
You might be right there, Chris, it might be after the.
No, I read the, I read the minutes.
I think what's throwing me off is the brewery was continued, I think it was.
Yeah, yeah, you know, I bet that's throwing me off too. Yeah, okay, all right, I'm, I'm betting on the 10th now.
All right.
Work it out.
He'll get back to me. Moving along, under economic development updates, the Economic Development Committee is, is requesting that, from the Board of Selectmen, to encumber $20,000 for the development of a, what they're calling a community marketing program. The EDC marketing group is still finalizing in scope of work, but is intended to complement the recommendations that were made from, the presentation from Fine Point, and also Metro Create presentations in 2014, and some of what Eric Winger, is that his name?
Wing.
Wing, Wing, had presented. Again, the scope of work will become the basis for, in RFQ, in addition to the scope, to include a plan for a governance model and sustainability plan, which the full EDC would approve the scope in RFQ before it goes to public. So this, this request is a culmination of some of the conversations that we've had over the last several months with regards to continuing the efforts of some of the studies and analysis that we've had done. In addition to that request for that community marketing program, looking to take the lead on that, they're also creating recommendation for future spending, which we've talked about in the past, so there's no mechanism currently that exists for anybody to propose or utilize that downtown enhancement funds. So they're gonna be creating a recommendation for the board to consider. The focus will be on community initiatives like wayfinding, streetscapes, et cetera. Secondarily, business may be allowed to request grants or loans, and they're inclined to include all amenities, business areas, rather than restrict the idea to those within downtown proper, so the central business or the downtown Old Lay District. And the Board of Selectmen's input to that end is desired. So, that particular piece, they'll be making a, a proposal of, for consideration for the board to adopt some mechanism or matrix to be able to request, again, I haven't seen it, so I don't know what it's gonna look like, but to request use of funds for, for such, such reasons as the money's been allocated for. But again, their, their official request was, was to encumber $20,000 specifically from the community enhancement funds, or some funds for, for the development of that community marketing program in continuation of some of those projects that were, were done over the last several months.
So when will we see the, the formal detailed request?
What's the?
They met this morning, voted, and told them that I would bring the request to tonight's meeting. So that is the request. Intention is that the.
Are they gonna write up something, you know, some parameters of what they're dealing with?
So that was part of the discussion, so if the board is inclined to fund this community marketing program by saying yes to this request, then the marketing subgroup is going to write a scope of work that will be turned into an RFP to then have, during the month of March, at the April EDC meeting, the full board, the full committee would vet that RFP and scope, and if they liked it, then we could put that out on the street to actually hire a company to do the community marketing program. So the.
That's fine, but I guess I'm just looking for something on paper that we can, we can look at and mull over and.
You want to see the scope before you approve the money?
Well, I wanna see the.
I'd like to see some scope.
I wanna see the request in writing versus verbal.
In the packet, Kevin?
No.
Okay, well, I mean, that's it in writing.
They just met this morning.
Right.
And then.
Okay, then I'll go a step further. I'd like to see some kind of a scope.
Right, if you want the scope, the, the group didn't want to go down the road of, of vetting out all that detail, if there, if there was no interest in supporting it at the board level. If you won't approve it without that, but you are interested in it, we'll get, we'll get that next piece done.
I'd say that I'm inclined to, but one needs to be cautious with the taxpayers' money, so I sure wouldn't mind seeing more details and at least the outline of the scope or something.
Sure, and you're still not committing to spending the money.
Understood.
The RFP may come up with a unsustainable product that, that doesn't get approved, and you guys control that piece of it. The group just didn't want to do all the work involved if there was no interest in it, and it would follow essentially the Eric Wing proposal and the Peg Behringer proposals in terms of the scope that they're trying to address. So you have seen. So you have seen the philosophical scope already. What they need to do is put that into a document that they...
So would this just be another free cash competitor?
No.
Request is from the downtown enhancement funds that have already been appropriated.
Yeah, it's money, so, I mean, I'd have to look at what it is they're looking to do, but I mean, there's, there's two pots of money that it could come from. One would be the downtown enhancement funds, which is at $100,000, or it could also come from, there's a community enhancement fund as well, which is just under 40.
Moving the money out of those requires town meeting, or us?
Yeah, just you guys.
Town meeting's already appropriated the money to be spent at your discretion.
So is the, the board want to encourage the group to provide more details?
Yes.
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 Yep. And they meet again?
April 7th. They meet the same day, the first Tuesday of the month, in the morning. The marketing group that will be doing the scope will be meeting several times between now and then. So they'll have a draft scope or even a final draft in advance of the April 7th meeting.
Okay.
So we could present that to folks for input as well, even before taking it to the full EDC.
Right, because we actually wouldn't have anything to do on the, meeting on the...
On the 7th?
On the 18th.
Oh, two weeks from tonight?
Let's post warrant, and...
On the 17th.
Is it 17th, April 17th?
Yeah.
Two weeks from tonight?
Oh, that one.
The 17th, the 17th, like a Thursday.
Okay, all right. Our second April meeting, I don't think...
Oh, the second April meeting?
The second, maybe it's the 21st.
Yeah, yeah.
The second April meeting, we won't have a whole lot of heavy lifting, so that'd be fine.
Okay.
Most, most everything will be done, because the articles will be out.
And water sewer rates will be done.
The article that they voted on, or the, the vote they took, was to request the BOS for startup funding for a community marketing program, using downtown enhancement funding, not to exceed the 20,000, and that the EDC would then create an RFP to cover what the marketing would be doing, its sustainability, and its governance model. There was a lot of discussion about what the governance should include, and it was tied into that sustainability. Somebody has to be in charge of it, and so it wouldn't be sustainable without some sort of formal...
This wouldn't be in any way, or, I know it's still in the planning stages, whatever, tied in with the Business Alliance at all, it's completely separate from them, because at one point, the board did allocate money to the Business Alliance to use for downtown marketing and other...
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know what road it's going to go down, but I think, you know, I could envision a governance model that includes the town, Aspen Valley Chamber of Commerce, the MBA, you know, a variety of input as a, you know, a committee or something, but, but it wouldn't be delegated to...
Gotcha.
We've done that funding in the past. Last year's request actually was reduced, they just focused it on the sip and stroll, but you're right. And then we've also done those three grants for signage improvements as well. I think we did three at 5,000 each.
We did a facade thing, we did...
Yeah, facade.
Well, there was a graffle wayfinding at one point, there was also...
Correct. Yep. But that money has been put in there and hasn't been utilized, is still fully available for the downtown enhancement. And this, that was the intent when it was set up, was, again, not thinking that, I don't know why they named it downtown, but certainly it wouldn't be solely for the downtown. Also, the EDC is evaluating, as we've discussed, the town's alcohol policy, the liquor license continuation piece, and they're expecting to provide feedback by the April 7th Board of Selectmen meeting of some sort. They're looking at specific questions around, specific questions were raised around section 17 and 22, have come up, and those are, have been being discussed. With regards to the mill, Clark Tower Place, myself and Bill Nemzer, town planner, met with Saracen Properties, the new note, mortgage holder of the property, at their offices in the mill last week. It was, it was an excellent meeting for Bill and I, and it was, they had seven of their top folks at that meeting, including the president and CEO, the principals, their director of leasing, leasing manager, some general counsel. It was, it was a great meeting, we met for a little over two hours. Again, had an opportunity to meet the players and the management team that's there. All of that sort of has culminated into, there's not a whole lot that can be shared at this time due to their property, you know, they're committed, they've basically stressed that they're committed to making the property a success, and that more public information once, once the legal necessities are resolved by the end of the month, it will become more public.
Can you comment, and perhaps this sort of ties in with what you're saying? There was a lot of buzz last week when the Beacon came out, and full page in the back, half-page, I guess, was dedicated to a, an auction that was going over down there. Can you comment on that?
Yeah, so...
And how it implicates what's going on?
Essentially, Saracen Properties has purchased the note from the original mortgage holder, which was JP Morgan. JP Morgan has sold the note to Saracen Properties, who is serving as the, essentially, like, like the mortgage company. Wellesley Management is still the owner of there, and still on the deed. Saracen has made, has done their legal notice and things like that to foreclose on the property, and will likely become the buyer. To some degree, it's a little bit of a legal formality road that they have to go to, but they have every intention of owning and fully operating the property as a whole. There's some, there's a lot of, again, legal stuff that's in there, requires anybody potentially that could come to the table, have to put down a half a mil, half a million dollars surety and some other stuff, but, you know, I, I guess you do run across the potential that somebody could come in and pay, you know, more than what they purchased it for, and they can make a little money on it and walk away, but that's unlikely. So we don't anticipate any changes, but it's sort of restrictive in the sense of their public outreach. And at, at this point, for the next sort of 30 days, they're in triage mode, they're, reassuring existing tenants and saving relationships there. They're still are actively signing leases, they have that full authority to sign and engage leases, rent space, so they continue to do that. But again, I think just for the public to be aware is, is that they're in there, you know, they're committed to the, to the project, they're committed to, you know, making a successful project out there, but it's going to be a little bit quiet until after this legal issue is resolved. So I would anticipate early April, they'll be, they'll be able to speak much more to where they want to be.
Their ongoing conversations with, even we talked earlier about the brewery, that's all legit, going on behind the scenes, that is happening.
Yes, that's happening.
Is happening without...
Yes, and they have every authority to, to execute leases and, you know, maintain that. As I said, they're, you know, right now, they're in triage mode. I, I would anticipate, after that March timeframe and that the legal issues are addressed, I would anticipate a full marketing campaign, and probably, you know, to be honest, probably a rebranding effort, significant rebranding effort, is what we'll, probably we'll see early spring. So again, they aren't, they didn't just obtain the property in the sitting around, but they, they can't speak too much to anything yet, but once they clear through some hurdles, legal hurdles, fully convinced that they're going to be a great partner for, for the community, and looking forward to it, so. Those that are planning to attend Friday's Chamber of Commerce meeting that's supposed to give an update, I wouldn't anticipate them providing too much of an update, to be honest with you, but if you're around.
Coffee and a muffin.
Yeah, I mean, it was really sponsored by...
You're good for that, Chris.
Cambridge Focus, who, Cambridge Focus is a tenant in there, and I think one of the principals from Saracen will be there at least to kind of give an update, but I wouldn't expect them getting into too much detail.
Their guys are all local, relatively.
Oh, yeah, yep.
Well fam.
Yep, well fam, and they're going to operate with about five, full-time, will be located at the mill, in their offices. They, they're currently within the exact office space that Wellesley Management occupied. They've turned the conference room into a full leasing office. So it's exciting, again, I think it's, we're going to have a good relationship, and looking forward to the, the future of the project there.
Thank you.
Any other, any questions? The only other item I had, actually, I know Bill was at that, it's no secret that Gruber's Market is looking to sell, I'm sorry, Gruber's Furniture, is looking to sell the property. There was a planning board, it wasn't a hearing, it was a sort of informational presentation that was provided, a developer for Honeydew, that was not received well at all by the planning board and some of the folks that were there, for a million reasons I could go into, particularly, I mean, with regards to the location of it, proposed drive-through and, and everything. So I think that was heard loud and clear, and expecting the owner of Gruber's to come back before the planning board and, and get an understanding of, you know, requests of them, what they would like to see, what type of uses out there, so. It is, it's available, but it's not actively listed, so it's not listed with a Realtor, so I'm not sure what kind of, you know, I'm not sure what kind of interest they're generating there, but it is a key location, certainly for, for Maynard. There's been conversations about, you know, that it's a historic building and all, all kinds of stuff, and it's been determined that it's not, it's been, there's been five, it's changed over several times.
Historic site.
Historic site, and they got a circoplack, which you can get, but it's not a, it's not an issue.
My, my point was going to be, Andrew mentioned earlier, the presentation that was made by the woman that came in and talked about, you know, downtown enhancements and whatever, the, that particular piece of...
Peg Behringer?
Peg, yeah.
Yeah.
Behringer.
Yeah, Peg Behringer.
That particular piece of property, it butts the river.
Yeah.
And so, based on her presentation and her desire, her recommendation that the town begin to embrace the river, it becomes very important to us to make sure that whatever goes in there doesn't block the river, but rather invites the river to us, and, you know, people that are, I hope that the message gets to the planning board, who sat through that meeting, that indeed, that's something for them to express to the, you know, to the owner, that when they go to sell it...
They were on it.
Okay.
They're, they're on it.
Notwithstanding the negatives of the specific project, those aspects of it were excellent. They intended to have a sidewalk from the municipal lot to Main Street along the river, for instance, completely opening up that vantage point, as well as making it pedestrian-friendly, where right now, you're walking through a dirt parking lot if you choose to walk back there.
It's a bad project for a lot of reasons, but that piece was good.
Somebody's got to spray paint that old barn, so...
Plus, he, he was making fun of the graffiti mural.
So that's a, you know, that's a piece that, that, again, that's written in our downtown, economic development-wise, to, to watch, you know, we're watching, and I think it's an important piece of property in town. Any other questions? All right. TA report, the DEP meeting to address the flooding on Hayes Street has been tentatively scheduled, the board can make it.
March 17th.
For April 28th, from 5:00 to 6:30.
What day is that?
It's a Tuesday, it's a Conservation Commission meets at 7:00 PM that evening.
So it'll be here?
Yeah, so, I guess, yeah, logistics, we'd have to figure out whether we do a joint posted meeting.
April 28th?
April 28th, yeah. From 5:00 to probably 6:30, because they're, they have their meeting at 7:00. That's with regards to addressing the flooding on Hayes Street. So we, we went back with those few dates that we had at our last meeting, brought those back to DEP, and they've, they've said tentatively, at this point, April 28th works. And I think, I think it would work for, Conscom was going to hear it tonight as well.
Yeah, Conscom actually meets at 6:30.
Yeah, 6:30, that's right. They could meet at 7:00 if they had to, though. What else do I have? The Chief Starwars and I attended a meeting, a second meeting that's been organized by the Cemera Group, which is the regional, regional ALS Intercept Group, if folks remember, I know David was on, we joined with Cemera. So this, there've been a, a couple of meetings here and there they've organized. Actually, the town manager in Concord is the chair of the Cemera Group, and they've, they being Pro EMS, who's the operator of the ALS system, is proposing a rate increase. Cemera Group of us voted to approve the rate increase, it then needs to come back before the board to, for, in every community, for final approval. They put that on for May 1st potential, so we'll see that, I'll work with, with Bill to determine when we want to have that on, but certainly in the very near future at a meeting. They're looking to increase the billing rate by 10% for ALS that they handle, that would increase, but also on the town side, the BLS, the basic life support that we get...
Thank you.
Would all, sorry, ALS is advanced...
Your acronym.
Sorry, yeah, ALS is advanced life support, BLS is basic life support. So our ambulance in town is a basic life support. When there's a, you know, when there's a medical issue that raises it beyond the level of care that BLS is, is capable of handling, it then moves up to an ALS. When we need ALS, ALS care, there's an intercept vehicle that comes, it's a regional, they have, they run two in the region, that ALS unit will respond. Maynard still does the transport, so if they're getting transport to Emerson, the paramedic on that ALS unit will ride with, in Maynard's ambulance, and will do the differences, that all of that ALS billing goes to Pro EMS and not the town. On the BLS runs, they do, they do, Pro EMS does the billing for us, but we get all of that money, that's where that ambulance receipt money comes from. So it, it would be a, a net benefit to the town in the, directly, in the sense that the BLS rate would also go up 10%. Another piece to that is that it's been five years, and they've had zero rate increase. So we've talked about that as a group, that hey, it probably makes sense to visit this more frequently than every five years, so that it can be a little more incremental, but at this point, it was kind of, it was never considered in the way the contract is. So this is the first time they've relooked at it, but I'll talk about it more in detail when we look at where they're at on revenue and stuff, but it makes sense, but it does need final board approval for each of the communities in the region. Parking, the, Andrew, myself, and Bill Nemzer were at a parking meeting with the Maynard Business Alliance, and it was fairly well-attended within their group, to discuss, this is the meeting that had been put off two or three times, to finally discuss a couple of issues that they had raised, a discussion on potential parking stickers in designated areas for, or parking permits for employees working in the downtown, designated parking, and then general conversation about metered parking, et cetera. The, the big takeaway is that they've sort of formed a little subgroup of two that was continuing to work with the town, to come up with some other brainstorming ideas, et cetera, and, and they'd like to come back before the, the board as a group, but in addition to that, it's also, we've continued, we've had additional discussions with MAPC and others about parking, and continue to hoping to create factual data and begin addressing potential solutions. There's definitely concerns about the amount and location of spaces abound, but a lot of, a lot of the conversation was, it's sort of a lot of anecdotal evidence that suggests that spaces are there, and in some cases, if people are willing to walk short distances, but a lot of the MBA, the Maynard Business Alliance's concerns for this particular short meeting was focused on, on freeing up spaces for customers and identifying some short-term, easy solutions and easy fixes, I don't say easy, but relatively short fixes that we could address. particularly to try to designate employee parking areas and free up additional parking and come up with a solution on that. So, we're still talking about that. Am I missing anything on that?
No.
Good.
So, what are they gonna do? I mean, are you gonna be participating when they're putting together ideas to bring to us? Because I'm a little stuck on the enforcement angle of-
Yeah.
Right now, the next steps is a survey of the local businesses to determine how much parking they think they need, both for their employees and for their clients.
That's good, that's good.
We, we've sent a series of questions. One of the members of the group is working to create the survey, to do all the heavy lifting, but we've sent them probably 20 questions of sort of like, try to help them get the survey going.
It's a little bit of a joint effort.
A draft before they put it out there, but trying to find out, what are, what are the peak times? We don't wanna assume we know what it is and it'll be different for each type of business. But if we find out the total demand for parking, even in that anecdotal way, we expect to be able to move forward with some better recommendations from them.
Okay.
On our end, we're gonna determine the number of parking spaces down there. We know we have the information, we just don't have it sitting in front of us. So, we'll verify what we, what the town controls. And part of the survey is also gonna ask what the private landholders have for spaces. So, they need three for their employees, but they have three. You know, that, that doesn't, that doesn't mean that we need to provide them with three more.
Yeah, and overall, I mean, they had some questions about, but loss of particularly behind CVS Subway, the, the loss of rail trail parking spaces there. They had kind of heard periphery conversations about that and we provided some facts specific to that. So, it was, it was a good introductory meeting, I would say.
If you need any survey examples, I can think of a few.
Okay. That would be helpful.
Did you bring up the idea of possibility of angled parking on Main Street? Were they receptive to that?
We brought that up. I don't think they, there wasn't really much conversation where we were proposing the parking. I think because of the, the very reason that everybody that was there was solely located right in that downtown. They're kind of like, oh, that's too far for us. I did discuss potential of the left lane, left turn lane only by Walgreens.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, all kinds of, yeah, that might be another option to pick up some spaces. Nobody really commented one way or another on the angled parking, I think.
More philosophical.
Yeah.
You know, what would happen if we raised parking rates or what would happen if we eliminated the meters? You know, just to let them know that it wasn't just a matter of like, building another parking lot.
Yeah.
That there's a lot of things to consider.
But the business owners that are, that are in, that were sort of hyped up about it and were in attendance were all of those business owners that are, you know, very isolated, locally, you know, located altogether right there. You know, sort of serendipity, Gallery 7, outdoor store, but nobody up Main. So. Yeah, that's an ongoing item. Last thing I had, just wanna let the board know, the, our council on aging director is currently out, not working due to an injury that she had and we're hopeful that she'll return to work next week and healthy. Just so you're aware, it's delaying the implementation of some of her program changes and others are already in place or will move forward in her absence. So, there's been a little bit of a delay there from her being out. That's really all I have. Actually, real quick, this may come up as a question, just reminding folks that the nomination papers for Board of Selectmen, school committee elections and the moderator have been, are available until March 13th. And I think at this point, we have, the numbers are three have pulled papers for a selectman. One has pulled papers for moderator, which is not Jim. Three have pulled papers for the school committee members and one for the trustee for, there's only one available for the library at this point. So, I think they have, they have until, what, the 16th, I think it is, to turn them in.
So, selectmen's the only competitive one at the moment?
Yeah, selectmen, actually, I think, you know what, I think there's a competitive one for the two, there's-
Is there two teams?
Two school committee members and I think three have pulled for the three-year term. And there's two available and then one has pulled for the, the two, the two-year term.
One of the three?
No, one in addition, so I think there's been four, so. And then only one for the one moderator. So. But we've been having that, just, you know, we've been having that internal discussion, potential of if Mr. Coleman isn't healthy and back, that moderator position isn't going to be in effect until July 1. So, we'll have to be looking at our alternate moderator for, to moderate our annual special town meeting.
Yeah, that's okay.
So, just to throw that out there.
We were told that the process in the charter of the bylaws is that, that happens at town meeting?
That's correct.
But it probably would make sense for us to have somebody coached up as opposed to just picking someone up.
Well, the election actually takes place prior to town meeting.
Yeah.
So, it would make sense to have the person who is, and by the way, I can talk offline, but I've had a conversation with the current moderator.
Okay.
So, he has some desires relative to how we approach town meeting.
Okay.
Because he wants-
Good to know.
He wants to address town meeting.
Okay.
Hmm, he's still the moderator.
Yes, and he's still the moderator as of-
Yeah, no, absolutely. We just haven't had any communication with him beyond the communication with his wife.
The newly elected, theoretically, the newly elected moderator could be appointed by town meeting, assuming that the current moderator wishes to turn it over to that person.
Sure, that's an option.
All right.
That's it.
That's it, huh? All right, you're gonna give me that, leave that one for me on Chair Report. Okay, Chair Report, couple meetings, we got the, we got a subcommittee policy meeting tomorrow night. Just internal, just go over logistics of water and sewer and cemetery and probably start talking about naming policy. And then next week on the 10th, we got Chris Okerfer coming in to talk about our initial comments on the water and sewer cemetery regs. Kevin, we, in regards to the Winter Street parking for the rail trail, I know that Mass DOT had advertised for comments on that and I know we commented on that, although I didn't see it in the packet, but we must have it somewhere. But do I understand that now they're saying they won't reduce the parking in Winter Street unless we promise to build it, should people want to park there?
That's correct. Yeah, I think if the determination of the, of the need for the additional parking is determined later, that we would commit to that.
Wouldn't we be the ones to hear the complaints that there's not enough parking?
Honestly, I think it was an opportunity for them to sort of save face on saying no, no, no.
To everything, yeah.
And caving in and saying yes.
Okay, just curious, I mean-
You're right, it's-
I think the biggest reason is-
I see that nobody's gonna complain to them if there's not enough park.
Exactly, nobody answers the phone there.
Yeah, I thought it was amusing that, you know, they have a public hearing soliciting comments and we've already seen written comments from them saying they're not gonna do it.
Yeah, and I think conservation might have pushed it a little too. And that's kind of when they said, okay, we'll give in and allow you to commit to doing if the need arises. But I agree, Jason, I don't know, I mean, once it's built.
So, is that something we can put together for the next meeting? Just, is there a timeliness to the response that's needed?
No, I don't think, yeah, I mean, it's something we can put together, yeah. If that's, I mean, if that's, the board is that strong that-
I mean, the board, there's an agreement, they want fewer than 20.
Well, they, they said they would agree to only build the 10.
If we-
If we came up with 10 additional.
We haven't discussed whether we would promise, I assume we would, but we just haven't done it. So, if we put it together, then we can-
Yeah.
Knock it off at another meeting.
I think they probably, I mean, it's rare if they offer to build something over a community to say, no, we don't want it. So, I don't think they, they kind of were baffled by that.
Be specific, we don't want it there.
Yeah.
Well, we don't want that much there.
We don't want that.
We'll take it, we'll take it somewhere else, I'll take 10 spots somewhere else.
Yeah, that's true, that's quite true. And they were pretty definitive that they wouldn't do that.
Right.
We'll build too much in the wrong spot, but not enough where it matters. Okay.
US parking.
And then, Kevin, you're working on the list of contracts?
Yeah.
You brought up last time?
Yep.
Okay. And then the other big issue is-
You're looking for contracts solely that are Board of Selectmen issued contracts, is that?
I don't know, I guess, I mean, my theory is that all contracts should be rebid every three years, just to keep the, keep the person on their toes, for one, but I don't know how many are old or dead.
Well, there's some, I mean, there's some contracts that have never been bid because they're not required to be. There's others that have, there's, you know, there's contracts that aren't under the purview of Board of Selectmen, that are under dollar thresholds, that are TA contracts, there's contracts that are signed in by other department heads that aren't, you know, contracting-
Elevator service contract.
Obligations of the Board of Selectmen, so.
And I thought, and I thought, we're talking multi-year, kind, we're not talking project contracts.
Yeah, a lot of them was a multi-year, they're just not at a level that-
We're talking professional services type, multi-year contracts.
Okay.
I have no idea how many there are.
So, are engineering, things like that?
Yeah.
Yeah, that would count, sure. I don't know what else. Legal, legal counts, must be a few others.
Yeah.
All right. Then the last thing is that there was a meeting the other day with representatives from 129 Parker Street. And, and I was there and Kevin and Andrew were there and Bill Nemzer and John Witten, our, our legal counsel on the project, was there. And discussion during that was to try to come to an agreement or understanding on the controlling, uh, legal documents on the development of 129 Parker Street. And, you know, it's pretty clear to us that the development agreement is a controlling thing for the entire footprint and I, I think we came pretty close to them fully grasping that, I'm not sure they're quite there, but-
Grasping, but maybe not agreeing?
Yeah. But the bigger issue is that they wanna come before the board and talk about their latest and greatest ideas for the site. So, we're gonna make time for them to come in next meeting on the 17th and they'll present a, a development concept plan and talk about, you know, I think they're gonna talk about how it compares to the old '06 approved plans and, and the ad hoc committee stuff and talk about possible next steps. So, that should be interesting. I'm not positive if we've, if we've actually seen that particular one or, I think it's, I don't know, it's not too different from all the ones I've seen.
Yeah, it is a revised, but it's not, yeah, it's not too different. They did say it was an updated one, but-
Yeah, I couldn't really tell if it was the updated part or not, but they'll explain all that when they come in on the 17th. So, don't miss that meeting, it'd be good. But otherwise, that's it for me. So, old new business, Tim, what do you got?
CPC made their final decisions, all applications that came in in the final process will be moving on to town meeting, so, there's that.
Can you briefly summarize which ones were approved? If you, if you have them, if you don't, that's fine.
I have them, there's a lot of them.
You said briefly, you had 20 seconds.
Yep, the-
Ours, did ours get approved?
Yes, the preservation of artifacts, memorial park, downtown, Coolidge reuse survey, rail trail, money, fieldhouse survey and Fowler Playground slash Green Meadow survey playground.
Coolage reuse survey?
Coolage reuse. And conservation reserve, yeah, the Coolidge reuse. This, I guess, could go back to our conversation earlier when we were doing, you said, survey for Coolidge School. The CPC put in a last-minute application for 20 grand so they could find ways to preserve the building or do something with the building, see what could be done out of it, so.
I'm, I'm a little unsure of the word survey, you know.
Survey-
When I was talking survey, I was talking, you know, plot lines.
Plot, that might qualify as plot.
Are we talking?
I think we're doing building plot line.
Is that what they're talking?
We could, they could look at it.
Who put the request in?
The committee itself, the historic-
All right, something to look at, I mean, that may be good.
Aren't there deadlines that everybody else has to-
Yeah, they finally have their own deadlines, but, okay.
Yeah, I did bring that up with them, I had concerns saying, why are you guys putting things in at the last minute? But according to their charter, it's fine.
We gotta get a charter like that.
Yeah. So, that, that 20 grand's there to go in the meeting.
Did you say they funded the Fowler School Playground?
Yes.
Okay. But nothing with Green Meadow or?
Green Meadow got 50 to do site work slash build a fence.
Okay, and Fowler was how much, you know?
Fowler was 100 plus the 16 that you promised them.
Okay.
Does that mean traffic's off the-
Traffic will be something totally different, I heard.
That's still on there.
All right, fine.
Traffic at the schools?
Yeah.
Traffic in park, traffic flow in parking.
Also, keep on your radar, the Coolidge Task Force is also probably looking to stay together for a little longer.
A little longer than what?
Then-
They're gonna pay the bill to keep it going?
Well, they just got 20 grand.
Yeah, they were, right now, they're, they presented on Saturday saying that they were, they were planning on June 1st, July 1st.
They're gonna look to stay if they can, they wanna use this, actually use this, this money for surveys and other things. That's why they put the application in.
I thought the CPC put the application in.
Well, mostly same members.
No, it came from somewhere else because the CPC makes the decisions, so. Task force itself wanted it.
Where'd you start it, Kevin?
I don't-
Monster, man, we got a carrying cost on that building, we gotta decide, it's unfair to the taxpayers to-
I thought that was pretty clear.
Keep scratching our head, man, but anyways.
I think that was pretty clear when they came in, that's why they said it.
The member who asked me to come in and reaffirm that message that-
Are they changing their own scope of, of work by appropriating this money?
Yeah, the charge in their appointment's only until June 30th.
And on Saturday, they presented as if that was their understanding.
Yeah.
We'll find out when I, hmm, that doesn't-
They're self-funding at this point?
Look in the camera, ask them if they're watching.
They're doing the bake sales, that's fine too, but-
They're not self-funding.
They gotta pay to keep the leaks off them.
CPC.
Off the roof, too. But, okay. Anything else, Tim?
Nope.
Chris?
Oh, at the urging of several people before you, anything from three, six months, folks?
Good, you talk to them.
Okay, I lose track of so much time.
Last meeting, we heard that, we asked and we haven't heard anything.
Yeah, right. No, we, we have heard back from both of them, but their feedback is, we're still trying to get a chef and the Carroll Group, I was very shocked at their response, actually, because it made it sound as though they had done nothing in eight months. They said, we're still looking to get a list of businesses interested in, you know, taking over the license and sort of like, I mean, you could've gone door-to-door a few times in eight months.
They haven't done anything in a year and a half.
Yeah, no, it just-
So, are these written responses?
Yes. I spoke to the gentleman from the Indian- I spoke to the gentleman from the Indian Restaurant Savory's on the phone. The Carroll Group was an email.
Yeah, I mean, we can, I mean, if, I mean, if the board wants to have them come in, I mean, we can do that, man. It's, it was written as, you know, periodic updates directly to the Board of Selectmen, so.
I made it clear to both of them, I wanted to hear back during the month of March. Excuse me?
Just put the communications in the packet.
Okay. Yeah, I wrote them to somebody, to you or to, might have been one, it must have been just you, Kevin.
Will we be talking?
I'll get it in the packet.
Probably, so Stephanie.
I told them both I wanted to hear from them again before the end of March.
Good.
And the third one in that group we'll be talking about later, or?
The third one is self-regulating. I mean, I don't think there's an update.
McDonald's?
Yeah, he hasn't done anything, and he said he wasn't going to do anything until he finishes that building, but, yeah, it's in place at that timeline.
That, the, the issue of the time period is one of the things that came up with the EDC group. I forget which one of those articles put seventeen or twenty-two addresses the dormant license issue.
Okay.
And so they specifically.
They both do, yeah.
We're going to, one of them has to do with the manager role.
Yeah.
And they, there was a question about why we require the manager to be on site for thirty hours, who's policing that? And if there's a problem with it, how would we know? You know, so they just sort of questioning why that rule was in there. I don't know if it's state law or not, we were, you know, that's why they didn't have the feedback immediately. There's a lot of work to be done to match up the two documents. But the, the issue of the six-month and the dormant licenses was part of the conversation.
Well, that's quite a question to ask, Chris.
Well, I'll ask again. See you in two weeks. Well, the, I think the DPW did a great job with the intersections and stuff, as we talked about last time. And it was part of their plan to get to it. Are they going to do anything downtown to kind of, you know, between the meters? And it's kind of difficult in some sports to get from your car to the sidewalk and.
As long as it keeps snowing.
Well, I don't know that, but I didn't know if they had any plans to attack that again.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, I understand that the, you know, the challenges, but.
They are, in fact, they've, they've tried to, working on opening up some additional spaces as well at the library and at the lot, particularly the event that's tomorrow night, I think, the Oars.
Open your second electric space would open up.
Yeah.
You know those guys are going to want it.
We actually, it wouldn't matter in the short term, there's a part on back order.
Oh, yeah?
Only one of the stations is actually active right now.
Oh, all right, good, more snow then?
Yeah, I mean, with Chris.
It's like another week.
Tomorrow, so it's on our list of snow operations conversation.
Just curious, that's all.
Yeah.
That's it for me. David?
Yeah. Thank you to whoever got the message off to 129 Parker Street, please take cloud.
Yep.
To the building.
Yep.
There was an email correspondence back a while ago, Kevin, from a business downtown that was interested in a Carrion liquor license.
Yes.
And I had heard that nothing had happened because they were waiting for contact from Town Hall and had not heard, have you been in contact?
Yeah, we have.
Are they planning on coming in to speak?
Yeah, they, they contacted us after some deadlines that, we still have to do a ten-day notice, so it probably won't happen, since we're not going to have a, the thirty-first meeting is strictly related to that. We probably will see that request in April, at our April meeting.
Yeah, by the time they got back to us, they missed the deadline for the seventeenth.
Right. Yeah, we have been in touch with them, and we definitely will get it on a, on our agenda.
Yes.
Exactly right.
I would echo Chris's comments about the intersections in town and the way that the roads have been, have been cleared. The only concern that I would have relative to downtown is accessibility for handicapped individuals that is extremely limited. You know, somebody who has to park down in the basin, trying to get up to a business in downtown Main Street area is extremely difficult, if they're in a wheelchair, braces, or whatever else. But we have to be mindful of those who aren't as able as all of us. And you see crossing for some of those areas.
Fair enough, yeah.
But otherwise, I'm not being critical of them, I just think that it's something to be mindful of. That's all.
Jason?
Since I missed last week, a couple of quick ones. Kevin, is there any way to get a summary of what's gone into CPA since its inception? My understanding, Mike did like an audit of CPC, what's gone in, what have they matched? I'm kind of curious to see all of that stuff.
That's easy, that's already done.
You can get that from DLS website, or.
Yeah, we've already done internally too, we can, we have all the numbers.
I'm even looking at just big picture, I just.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's not what it was when we first adopted.
Yeah, okay.
It's not billions.
Just want to pass them on. Received, I received a couple of additional comments about the snow storage at the Green Meadow parking lot, and some question of why they can't use the skate park to store snow, passing that along.
Where are they currently storing it?
Up against the fence, I think, everywhere, everywhere they can. Oh, I think you answered that one. I know, I talked to you previously, did we get, do we have the full tally for the potential disaster aid for the Blizzard?
They've redone it.
Okay.
So we did it, we did an initial disaster assessment, which was somewhere around a hundred and forty thousand. They've then have revised their scope, and we had a conference call on Thursday with MEMA that they're now looking at, because it's so difficult to identify a forty-eight-hour timeframe to use because it was such an impact of snow, it was really a two-week duration. When we finished with the Blizzard, we had more snow on top of that, and on top of that. So they're looking, they've actually extended it and looking at trying to get a two-week window. So it just increased the amount of work that, that we had to do now to go back and figure out. We've identified forty-eight hours in what we submitted, but now we have to go back and identify for like an entire fourteen-day period. Stephanie was working on a lot of that today. So we don't know what that, what that number's going to be, nor do we know if that is even going to be something that they'll even consider. But because of, you know, it's unprecedented, and the way the impact of the storm went, communities were still cleaning up that Blizzard storm, when they still had to deal with the next impact. So that has changed.
I think we'd take a hundred and forty thousand dollars, so.
Yeah. We'd get seventy-five percent of that, but, yeah.
Either way.
That's what we had identified in a forty-eight-hour window, so you can imagine expanding beyond that. So that's overtime, contracted services, and salt and sand. Now we're looking at expanding it for a much larger duration, all of the vehicle use. It's very, it's difficult, because every single vehicle make and model has a dollar figure per hour on what those costs, so all of those costs are now factored in for the big, the big number.
Okay. One last one quickly. At MMA, the Green Community Mass DEP booth.
Yeah.
Grabbed ahold of us and started asking about curbside recycling, curbside trash pickup, and mentioned a rebate program, wasn't a lot of money, but they've never gotten back in touch with me. I'm not sure, we can pick that up somewhere offline, but.
Okay. Do you know who he thought was it?
I have no idea.
Woman with glasses, duckhead?
And that's it for me, Bill.
All right. So we're at an end for our regular meeting, we're going to go into executive session to consider the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property. So give us a few minutes to shut down the cameras, and we'll start that.